It is Monday, March 6, 2023, and the time is 6:00 PM. This regular meeting of the Mesquite ISD Board of Trustees is called to order. A quorum is present, and notice of this meeting has been posted in the time and manner required by law. At this time, the board will move into a closed meeting under authority of Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, under personnel. No formal action will be taken in the closed meeting, and we will return back in here approximately 6:30. The time is 6:28 PM, and the Board of Trustees will now reconvene in open meeting. We'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We're glad you're here. Tonight, we have with us one of our finest. We have one of our Mesquite police officers, Sergeant CJ Phillips, that's here to lead our invocation. And then we will be led by the pledges of allegiance by a group of students from Hanby Elementary. So at this time, if you would like to stand for our invocation and our pledges.
Thank you. If you would just bow your heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for all the many blessings you bless us with right now, Lord. We just come before you, and we ask for your hand and your guidance to be upon this board as they go and they make decisions and they discuss all the things that they will do going forward tonight. Lord, we pray for all the teachers and principals and staffers here in the building, that you would also watch over them and guide them as they shape the young minds and the young souls of our community. Lord, we thank you every day for all you bless us with, and it is in your son's holy name I pray. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag. A pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Hello, my name is Jacob Martinez. I'm in fifth grade and I go to Hanby.
Hello, my name is Sedan Alvarez. I'm in fourth grade and I go to Hanby Elementary.
I am Marisha Gonzalez. I'm in third grade and I go to Hanby.
My name is Walter Mendoza, and I'm in second grade and I go to Hanby Elementary.
My name is Leila Fernandez, and I'm in first grade and I go to Hanby Elementary.
My name is Callie Schumate. I'm in kindergarten and I go to Hanby Elementary.
Y'all did a great job. Thank you so much. Sergeant Phillips, we appreciate you leading our invocation. Next on the agenda is our board moment. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say this month?
PTA banquet the other night was fabulous. Got to love to see lots of students get award for hard work and just recognizing our PTA volunteers. So we appreciate all the PTA does for the district.
Amen. It was very good.
I was just gonna mention the fact that February, March are two months that we have intense presence in Austin. I would like to really thank or claim thank Dr. Feinglass for leading this initiative because it's very important for our schools, especially everything that's going on right now. We also had the opportunity to be, to share some time over there with the teachers from MEA, the ATPE group, which was very eye-opening, and I enjoyed it very much. So you have to know that we're fighting hard for what we have to do. That's part of the advocacy that we do as a board, but we also see it in the school district. So thank you.
Mr. Carbo and I have the privilege of driving to Austin Wednesday, and we have meetings with several legislators along with Dr. Rivera and Dr. Fields and Dr. Feinglass, I believe. But we'll be coming back Wednesday evening, so y'all wish us well there. We intend to state our case before the lawmakers in Austin. Well, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is under Student and Staff Guest. Ms. Jobe?
Yes, sir. It's my privilege to introduce our Apple Corps honorees this month. First, we have Miriam Gibson from Motley Elementary. She's a fourth-grade bilingual ELAR teacher, and she has 10 years of experience. And here's a video to introduce her to you.
Floyd Elementary is excited to announce Ms. Miriam Gibson as one of the March Apple Corps recipients. Ms. Gibson is a lifelong learner and makes the learning relevant and engaging for all her students. She also pours into our staff and teachers and aids in their own development. We are proud to have Ms. Gibson as part of the Floyd family. Congratulations, Ms. Gibson. We're so proud of you.
I believe that teaching is important because every child needs someone in their corner to help them grow. Many children don't have that figure in their homes, and we are there to help them with everything, and not just the learning, but helping them feel loved and being there for them, being able to listen to them, just whatever they're going through, because we all have rough times as children, and we don't know what our children go through at home. So we have to be there for them and help them as much as we can.
It's my privilege to read this proclamation to induct you into the Apple Corps tonight. Whereas Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees seeks to honor outstanding classroom teachers who demonstrate leadership and innovation and dedication to the students in Mesquite ISD. And whereas Mesquite ISD Apple Corps consists of exceptional teachers nominated by their peers to receive the school district's highest award, therefore be resolved that the board officially welcomes Miriam Gibson into the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps on the sixth day of March 2023. Congratulations, and thank you for what you do.
Hi. I am humbled and grateful to be giving the Apple Corps award. A couple of years back, my family and I had the blessing of hearing a wonderful sermon at Sea Life about how we should approach our careers, having a mindset that we are working for God. Ever since then, I changed my ways of approaching work, and I believe that because of God and the pastors at Sea Life, I am here now. I want to thank God for allowing me to be part of the lives of the many students that have walked through my doors for the past 10 years. Dr. Valerie Nelson made that possible by hiring me and allowing me to be part of the Mesquite ISD family. I want to thank my principal, Ms. Alvarez, for everything she does to help me excel. I also want to thank my parents and siblings for believing in me even throughout all the mistakes I made and continue to make. To my wonderful and supportive husband, who has to deal with my nightly typing in order to get my lessons just right. I also want to thank my three children for all the ideas and different perspectives they give me. Finally, I want to thank my Floyd family and the students for allowing me to learn so much from them. I wouldn't be the teacher I am today without them. Thank you to everyone that is here to support me. Working for a school district that believes in God confirms that I am where God needs me to be. Mesquite ISD truly gives an equal opportunity for all to succeed, and I am a testament of that. Thank you again, and God bless you all.
Ms. Gibson, if you'd like to introduce any family or colleagues that are here with you.
Yes, my husband, Vincent Gibson. My children, H.O., Eric, and Viviana. My mother, Anira Boca Negra. Her husband, Rafael Boca Negra, back there. And everyone from Floyd, my principal, Ms. Cook, Ms. Middleton, everyone that's here from Floyd to support me. Thank you so much.
Our next honoree tonight is Susanna Cerber from Motley. She's a fourth-grade bilingual self-contained teacher with 25 years of experience.
I'm so excited, along with our staff and students, to honor Ms. Susanna Cerber, our fourth-grade bilingual teacher. She builds great relationships with her students and families. She is a wonderful servant heart, hard worker. She is a master teacher. She trains new teachers. She has a heart of gold. She really loves her students. She wants to serve them in the best way every day. She doesn't waste one second in the classroom, is always focused on doing a good job. And we are just so proud of you, Ms. Cerber. Congratulations from all of us at Motley Elementary.
To me, being a teacher is the most important thing because I can make a change in every kid's life. I can encourage my kids to follow their dreams. I can give them a hug if they need it, if they're having a bad morning. I can help them look for a career to be passionate in. I strive to be the teacher that I would want my own kids to have. So anything, everything that I do, all my hard work, I do it thinking that if my kids were in my classroom, that's what I want their teacher to do. And that's the work and the love that I give to my students, and I think that's what every teacher does.
Whereas the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees seeks to honor outstanding classroom teachers who demonstrate leadership, innovation, and dedication to the students of Mesquite ISD. And whereas the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps consists of exceptional teachers nominated by their peers to receive the school district's highest recognition, therefore be it resolved that the board officially welcomes Susanna Cerber, right, into the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps on the sixth day of March 2023. Congratulations.
Good evening. I would like to thank the school board, Dr. Rivera, for always making decisions that are in the best intent for our students and our staff. I would like to thank my Motley family for always being supportive. I've met my best friends at Motley, and they have become family. Thank you to my present and my past administrators, Ms. Flores, Dr. Delamar, Ms. Tatten, Dr. Walker, Ms. LaBarbara, for always helping me lead and giving me grace when I needed it. Next, I would like to thank my students for teaching me how to be a better teacher. I would also like to thank my parents. Mami, papi, muchas gracias por todos los sacrificios y por enseñarme a ser una persona trabajadora. Muchas gracias por todo, los quiero mucho. To my siblings, Judy and Jose, thank you for supporting my classroom by purchasing anything I need. I also want to thank my kids, Bryn and Liam. Thank you for not giving me a hard time whenever you want to play and I tell you I have to work. Every one of my students reminds me of you, and I treat them just like I would want your teachers to treat you. I love you both very much. To my better half and fellow teacher, Robert, thank you for being an exceptional teacher that I aspire to be. Thank you for being such a great father, husband, and for always being my number-one cheerleader. I don't know where I would be without you. And finally, I want to thank all of my Motley family, my friends, the Gutines, my husband, Ms. Lopez, and everybody else for coming to support me today. Thank you.
Ms. Cerber, if you would have your family stand, and we'd like to recognize them. And then all your colleagues from Motley Elementary or wherever.
We have one more Apple Corps teacher to recognize tonight. She was not able to be here, but she was actually supposed to be inducted in February last month. But I'd like to play her video so that you can meet her. Her name is Casey Haywood from McKenzie.
Casey Haywood truly is extraordinary. It's the little bit of extra that she puts into everything that she does. She has a heart for kiddos that need extra time or extra opportunities. You can always see her with kids in her classroom during lunch and after school. She gives up weeks of her summer to give students those opportunities to be successful, and they are. Every year, she produces so much growth and achievement from her students, and it is from the heart and care that she puts into everything that she does. We're so grateful to have Casey here at McKenzie.
Teaching is important because it lays the foundation for our society. We're here to guide kids and to help them be their most successful, along with their families at home. We're definitely a partnership. Just the day-to-day things that we practice and do with kids are just life skills beyond the reading and the math. There's also those social skills that set them up to be productive people in our society. And that's really important to me, and I know that that's something that's very important to Mesquite, that we value as a community.
On behalf of the Board of Trustees, we would like to thank Casey Haywood and Miriam Gibson and Susanna Cerber for all the contributions that each of you make in our classroom each day. Thank you so much.
Each month, we also recognize one of our outstanding para professionals as our star para honoree, and I would like to invite Kim Benuelos, principal at Shaw Elementary, to introduce us to her para tonight.
Sorry, I'm short. Good evening. It is my great privilege to introduce to you Ms. Raquel Liao. I want to tell you a little bit about her. She works in our front office, so she is the first beautiful face that people see when they first walk in every single day. We are so grateful for her bilingual talents and very dependent upon them every day. We don't know what we would do without her in that regard. Also, she is Miss Peem's expert, and so we do not know what we would do without her in that regard as well. She is patient. She trains other people in the skills that she has. She is kind, and everyone knows what it's like working in the front office because you are dealing with the public. So sometimes you have to work really hard to be kind, even when you are not met with kindness, and she is an expert at that as well. She is beautiful inside and out, and I am so excited to introduce you to Ms. Raquel Liao.
All right. Next, we have a video we'd like to play for you. This is from our Fine Arts Department, and this video is showcasing students who were selected for the Principal's Award for Art.
The Principal's Award is presented to the student whose artwork speaks to their campus's principal. Each year, the art teachers on every M.I.C. campus curate a gallery of student work for this award. From this selection, their campus principal personally chooses their favorite piece. The honor of Principal's Award winner is given to the artist whose work their school's principal has chosen. Mesquite ISD extends their congratulations to these talented artists.
Congratulations to those students. And now it's my pleasure to introduce Kristi Craja and the Leadership Mesquite class of 2023. I think Kristi would like to come forward and tell us a little bit about what they did today. John, can you cue the lectern mic?
Okay. Okay. So every year, Leadership Mesquite, I try to do different things with them. Today, we went and Tom Edwards toured us through the safe landing and the care, when Kristi took us to the care clinic, and we saw all the different things that the counselors do this year, do for our kids and the social workers and all the things that they provide our district that we, as a group, or some of us don't even really realize all the things that they do. And it was incredible to see the great things that they're doing for our district. So that was today.
If you are a member of the Leadership Mesquite class, please stand up so we can recognize you. This takes a lot of time and dedication. It is a year-long program, and once a month, they meet to see different areas of our city. So thank you for being here tonight. All right. Now I'd like to invite Kristi Davis to come forward. Is Ms. Davis here, our Director of Counseling? She is our Director of Counseling Services, and she was recently selected as the Rosine Fleming Counselor Supervisor of the Year by the Texas School Counselors Association. So congratulations to her. And Kristi, you can just stay up there because now we're gonna recognize your counselors. Eleven Mesquite ISD counselors were presented with the 2022 Texas School Counselor Association CREST Award. And here to shed light on our winners is Kristi Davis. So tell us a little bit about them.
Okay, welcome. Thanks for letting us come tonight to recognize these amazing counselors. CREST stands for Counselors Reinforcing Excellence for Students in Texas. The CREST Award recognizes school counseling programs across Texas that demonstrate a continuous commitment to building a campus team and programs based on the Texas model for comprehensive school counseling, recognized by, endorsed by TEA. The CREST Award winners are selected each year by the Texas School Counseling Association. It means that a school counseling program is operating at best practice, serving its students, staff, and community. For our campuses who went through the extensive application process, they evaluate every facet of their program and earn the highest designation in the state. The CREST Award is not just an honor, but a means to advocate for our counseling department and demonstrate how we support student success in school, and I'm so proud of these CREST recipients, so if they'll come forward. Vanguard High School, Potite High School, Kimbrough Middle School, McDonald Middle School, Beasley Elementary, Gray Elementary, Tosh Elementary, Porter Elementary, Shands Elementary, Galloway Elementary, and Lawrence Elementary. And if y'all remember, last year, we had six schools get this designation, and our goal this year was to get 10, and we got 11. So next year, 25 is our goal.
March is recognized as National Social Workers Month, and here to speak more about this is Director of Federal Programs Jennifer Mobley and Director of Special Education Stacy Carpenter. You'll come forward.
We have surprised looks on our faces because we'd planned to come up here and talk about them. I think, I will tell you, we are one of very few districts in the state of Texas who offers the kind of support services with social workers. Our social workers do everything from taking kids to the doctor, getting birth certificates, finding food, finding placements for a place to live, deeply embedded support that would otherwise not happen. And so I'm very proud of my team of social workers, and I know Stacy is of hers as well.
Same thing, except my social workers help with my program and my kids in my program, and they do unbelievable things for students every single day and the parents every single day as well, trying to help them. It's a true wraparound service that we are blessed to have.
I'd like to recognize our social workers if they're here this evening. Tom Edwards, McKenzie Harrington Bane, Lakunder King Fulton, Curtis Taylor, Carolyn Quintero, Rosalyn Shields Lampkin, excuse me, La Patricia Porter, Lawanda Jackson, Brittany Myers, and Azrael Armstrong. And now I'd like to invite Renee Murphitt from Wilkinson to come forward. She is being presented with our lifesaving award this evening. And in late January, Ms. Murphitt noticed a student in her classroom having trouble breathing after swallowing a piece of peppermint. She performed the Heimlich maneuver and encouraged the student to cough until the peppermint was dislodged. So congratulations to her, and we thank her for such action. Next is time to recognize our community partner. This month, we're pleased to recognize Chick-fil-A, and I believe we have a video to show you about them. This is for Replay Talk program.
This month, we are recognizing Chick-fil-A Mesquite as our featured Read Play Talk community partner.
Here locally at Chick-fil-A Mesquite, our main mission is to refresh others through generosity and hospitality. We know that when we refresh others, we feel refreshed, they feel refreshed, and everything turns out great.
Have a good day.
There are nine campuses hosting Lena Star groups this spring, including a group that's being held at Mesquite High School with some of our teen parents. We knew that we needed to provide a pretty unique incentive to keep these moms coming back week after week, and so Tom partnered with Chick-fil-A to make that happen.
And I just got thinking, you know, well, outside of the box, why don't I go to Chick-fil-A? I know some of the people there and see if they'd be willing to donate.
How are you doing today?
There's 10 sessions in this program for the girls, so they're donating four trays from there, and then I'm doing the other six.
I am a mom. Willow is six. These resources that these teenage girls are getting and being able to support themselves at a very young age, because if I'm my age and I still need help figuring it out, I can only imagine the challenges that they're experiencing as teen moms.
Thank you, Chick-fil-A Mesquite, for supporting these teen moms and the Mesquite community as a whole.
And I'd also like to mention that Chick-fil-A has generously decided to donate a free meal to each one of our Teacher of the Year Award winners that will be recognized later tonight. So thank you, Chick-fil-A. Now, it's time to recognize some of our outstanding students. And first is Alejandra Torres, North Mesquite High School. She's the TFA Speech and Debate State Qualifier for Dramatic Interpretation. Joseph Bowman and Grace Hammer are here from North Mesquite High School. They are the U.I.L. State Qualifiers in Policy Debate, and their sponsor is Naomi Bell. This next group of students is a Destination Imagination Team. They placed first in secondary-level service learning, advancing to the Lone Star Finals. We have Oliver Cervantes, Aelyn Hernandez Estrada, Annette Martinez Castro, Alexa Rodriguez, and Princess Zuniga from North Mesquite High School. And their sponsor is Monti O'Neill. Next, we have students representing the A.C. New Middle School Choir, and they were invited to perform at the Texas Music Educators Association. Their director is Melody Villegas. Next is the Destination Imagination Team from Kimball Elementary. They placed second in elementary fine arts, advancing to the Lone Star Finals. The students are Juniper Blaylock, Athena Clark, Trinity Hubbard, Cordelia Jemshetty, Isaac Lopez, and Colton Reese. And their sponsor is Buffy Mason and Lisa Hubbard. All right. Next is the Destination Imagination Team from Kimbrough Middle School. They placed second in middle-level fine arts, advancing to Lone Star Finals. We have McKinley Lynch, Paisley Miligan, Gracie Rose, Janie Vaughn, and Julie Vaughn from Kimbrough Middle School. And their sponsor is Buffy Massey. He was already up there. Next is the Destination Imagination Team from Tyser Center Elementary. They placed second in elementary-level engineering, advancing to the Lone Star Finals. We have Mason Craver, Aiden Lopez, Mia Lopez, Natalie Marinas, and Noah Rosas. And they, yes, they're from Tyser Center, and their sponsors are Hillary Locke and Gabrielle Diaz. Next is the Destination Imagination Team from Frazier Middle School. They placed second in middle-level service learning, advancing to Lone Star Finals. We have Isabella Vasquez, Alondra Gutierrez, Jennifer Centeno, Scarlett Metters, and Anaya Portillo from Frazier. All right. Also from Frazier Middle School, we have Elena Aguilar and Juan Aguilar. They earned first place in middle-level engineering, advancing to Lone Star Finals. And their sponsors are Dani Bepel and Natasha Wilhite Miller. Next, from Potite High School, we have the Academic Decathlon Team that advanced to state. This is Guadalupe Avalos Tostado, Stephanie Caldera, Donovan DeJesus, Colin Fraser, Allison Friedman, Isabella Rivera. And their sponsor is Jeff Blackwell. Mr. Everett, we are about to recognize our Teachers of the Year, so I might suggest we call a short recess to let these people clear out so we can move the Teacher of the Year families in.
Okay, we called a seven-minute break at 7:03, and it is now 7:10 p.m. So Ms. Joe, go ahead.
We are ready with our Teachers of the Year at the campus level. From Augsinger Elementary, please welcome Heather Sing Sauce. I don't know. Is Wade? There he is. Okay. Teacher of the Year from Austin Elementary is Vicky Buckle. Teacher of the Year from Beasley Elementary School is Monica Jones. Teacher of the Year from Black Elementary School is Jose Padron. Teacher of the Year from Canada Elementary School is Laura Garcia. Teacher of the Year from Florence Elementary School is Maria Gomez. Teacher of the Year from Floyd Elementary is Jennifer Aguilera. Teacher of the Year from Galloway Elementary is Sarah Thompson. Teacher of the Year from Gentry Elementary is China Pippen. Teacher of the Year from Gray Elementary is Courtney Hicks. Teacher of the Year from Hanby Elementary is Shelley Coyle. Teacher of the Year from Henry Elementary is Stephanie Smith. Teacher of the Year from Hodges Elementary is Rachelle Donovan. Teacher of the Year from Kimball Elementary is Debbie Jones. Teacher of the Year from Lawrence Elementary School is Melissa Willis. Teacher of the Year from Mackey Elementary School is Anya Herrera. Teacher of the Year from McKenzie Elementary School is Andreina Gomez. Teacher of the Year for McWater Elementary is Carla Montaneras. Teacher of the Year from Moss Elementary School is Amy Osborne. Teacher of the Year for Motley Elementary is Nicole Hartig. Teacher of the Year from Perron Elementary is Julia Everett. Teacher of the Year from Porter Elementary is Robert Serber. Teacher of the Year from Price Elementary is Haley Thompson. Teacher of the Year from Range Elementary is Sandy Simmons. Teacher of the Year from Rugel Elementary is Paige Barton. Teacher of the Year from Rutherford Elementary is Autumn McCulloch. Teacher of the Year from Seaburn Elementary is Karina Aguilar. Teacher of the Year from Shands Elementary is Alejandra Lopez. Teacher of the Year from Shaw Elementary is Noah Wood. Teacher of the Year from Smith Elementary School is Martesia Badger. Teacher of the Year from Thompson Elementary is Earl Wilson. Teacher of the Year from Tosh Elementary is Daniel Ruvo Kaba. Teacher of the Year from A.C. New Middle School is Melody Villegas. Teacher of the Year from Agnew Middle School is Shandra Shabani. Teacher of the Year from Frazier Middle School, Mandy Starks. Teacher of the Year from Kimbrough Middle School is Fatima Vallejo. All right. If I could have everyone's attention, please, so we can recognize our teachers. From McDonald Middle School, this is Teacher of the Year, Daniel Algarin. We're going to take a minute break here to shut the doors. A little loud outside. Okay. From Terry Middle School, our Teacher of the Year is Hannah Laird. Teacher of the Year from Bantston Middle School is Blanca Canones. Teacher of the Year from Wilkinson Middle School is Sierra West. Teacher of the Year from Woolly Middle School is Brittany Taylor. Teacher of the Year from John Horn High School is Joel Mays. Teacher of the Year from John Horn High School is Joel Mays. Teacher of the Year from the Learning Center is Devon Patterson. Teacher of the Year from Mesquite Academy is Andrew Spears. Teacher of the Year from Mesquite High School is Linda Ritter. Teacher of the Year from North Mesquite High School is Deborah Harper. Teacher of the Year from Potite High School is Brian Wester. Teacher of the Year from Vanguard High School is Kelly Riddle. It's fine. And Teacher of the Year from West Mesquite High School is Patricia Contreras. Mr. Board President, that concludes our recognition for this evening.
The time is 7:32 PM. We will proceed with our next item on the agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion, Board?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Carbo and a second by Mrs. Whitlock to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those who oppose, no. Motion carries. Next item is the Audience portion. We have three cards thus far. And what we're going to do is, I'm going to wait and I'm going to ask those of you that have signed up to address the Board regarding the 2023-24 school calendar, to wait until after the presentation, which will be just a few minutes. And if you are here and you wish to address this Board regarding an item on the agenda other than the calendar, we'll hear from you now. Seeing none, we will move to Personnel. We have two items, a Director for Safety and Security and the Principal at Frazier Middle School. Dr. Rivera?
Yes, Mr. President, those two items as an action item for those two positions. And so that's, as we discussed in closed session, those are the two recommendations for administration, and that is an action item.
We have a motion by Mr. Seward and a second by Mr. Rose to approve the Director of Safety and Security and the Principal of Lanny Frazier Middle School. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those who oppose, no. Motion carries. Dr. Rivera?
Yes, sir. Mr. Morris, would you approach the lectern, please?
Good evening. It's my pleasure to read a little short bio on my recommendation that you just approved for Director of Safety and Security. His name is Jeff Moore. And Jeff Moore began his law enforcement career in College Park, Georgia, before moving to Okaloosa County, Florida. Jeff has over 12 years in law enforcement, five of which were served as a School Resource Officer, in which he was a trainer for their nationally-recognized Okaloosa County SRO Unit. In May of 2019, Mr. Moore joined the Okaloosa County School District's Administration as a Specialist, conducting district investigations, leading digital and behavioral threat assessment teams, and implementing the Standard Response Protocol. Jeff has training in FEMA's Incident Command System, the National Incident Management Systems, and multi-hazard emergency planning for schools, just to name a few. Mr. Moore is married to his wife, Ashley, and they have five children. Jeff and his family are looking forward to their move to Texas and sharing his background, knowledge, and passion for school safety with the Mesquite ISD community. Unfortunately, Jeff could not be here tonight, but he looks forward to the opportunity of addressing the Board next week, or next month, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. And then with Ms. Tracy Curtis, please approach the lectern as I read her bio. Tracy Curtis had completed 29 years in the field of education. She started her career as a Spanish teacher and cheer coach at Spire, Oklahoma. She later transitioned to Academic Assistant Principal and Principal before joining Mesquite ISD. In 2019, Ms. Curtis began serving as Assistant Principal at Frazier Middle School, and most recently was appointed Interim Principal this past January. She earned her Bachelor of Arts in Spanish and Master's of Administration at University of Central Oklahoma. Ms. Curtis?
I want to thank everyone for this opportunity tonight. I came here four years ago. I'm finishing up my fourth year now. And I remember being at this Board meeting and being recommended for an Assistant Principal position with Kristi Morris. And it was just such a warm, wonderful climate. And nothing has changed since that time. There's not every place is like this. And I've been in a couple of school districts in a couple of different states. So, and I was thrilled to be working here. I felt like it was, you know, I got in. I don't know, people weren't able to get into Mesquite. And I want to thank Kristi Morris very, very much for giving me that opportunity. They say iron sharpens iron, and she has been a wonderful, wonderful colleague to work with and a mentor as well. I want to thank my Assistant Principals, Ms. Calico and Ms. Cook, for, ever since I took over as interim, for just helping me lead the school. And all the teachers for being so welcoming and understanding about changes that we were going, we were presented with, and just putting the students first and moving forward. So I will do everything in my power to make sure that Frazier Middle School is the best middle school in Mesquite. And again, I thank you for this opportunity.
Congratulations.
Sorry, do you have anybody with you today?
Do. And they've waited a long time, so I'm going to introduce them if that's okay. Okay, so I have, on the very end, my daughter Caitlin. She's waving. My mom Linda. My mother-in-law Mary. My husband Justin, my sweet husband. And then some good friends of ours and our neighbors, Jody and Lance Luna. And then a few colleagues from work. I thank all of you for being here tonight.
Congratulations again. The next item, we're going to move the position a little bit, not to indicate that we don't want to hear the effectiveness reports from Mr. Weeks and Mr. Lewis, but if the Board will allow that, we're going to move three items under Administration up. The first item is a report on the EAB Teacher Morale Study. Dr. Fields?
Good evening, President Everett, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Rivera. I can't imagine a better night to share this presentation with you than this one where we have been celebrating all of our teachers. I'd like to share some information with you about an important study that we have launched specifically to better meet the needs of our teachers. This presentation will include the process that we have gone through, the Phase One of the study, the findings that have come from that, and outline the next steps that we plan to take. Before I get too far into the presentation, I just want to give a big thank you to Debbie Tanton and Jennifer Morris. These two individuals have been partners with me in leading this project. They have the trust of our teachers and have gotten some really authentic, honest feedback from them, and they have been helping to ensure that those teachers also hear the progress that we're making throughout this process. So just a big thank you to them. So, over the course of a year, we employ a number of methods in order to get feedback from our teachers. You can see a lot of those represented here in this slide. And that input's been very valuable, and it's given us an opportunity to see what is uppermost in our teachers' minds at any given time and devise some plans to address issues as they come up. Some of the challenges, though, with these data sources is it's difficult to quantify exactly how significant the concern is. They're not measured in any sort of way. Like the POSAP, for example, just gives us individual statements from teachers. So it's difficult to determine how widespread any particular comment or feedback is. In addition to that, the basis for it is not necessarily research-based. It might be topical, what's going on at the moment that is uppermost in teachers' minds, but it's not necessarily anchored to the things that really drive retention and recruitment and improve teacher morale. So that's why we have moved forward to work with EAB. EAB is an organization that gathers all sorts of data and research around best practices in education. They have developed a practice that takes us through a quantitative and a qualitative data gathering based on research to really identify how are our teachers feeling about the issues that matter most in education? So Phase One outlines here, there's the research-based retention focus. We took all of the research that EAB provided us that said, these are the things that matter most to teachers. And they began by outlining a quantitative survey that we could administer to our teachers. They gave us a list of questions that we could send out to them based on the research. We customized some of those questions based on our specific district needs and sent that survey out to the staff. Dr. Rivera sent some personal video messages. We sent follow-up emails, letting them know how important this information was and how much we wanted them to participate in the survey. Following that, we did a qualitative focus. We knew that that data enough wasn't going to tell us specifically what was going on with our teachers. So the trends from the survey drove deeper questions that we polled to teachers in focus groups, where we had small group conversations led by Debbie Tanton and Jennifer Morris that really dove into what's really behind this topic that came up in the survey that we administered? Can you give us a little bit more information about it? Can you give us some examples of what it might mean to you? And then we presented the findings, both at our central office group meeting as well as ILT. And when we took those findings to ILT, we asked principals and district administrators to basically ask themselves a couple of questions. What are we doing at the district level that's contributing to this? And what might be happening at the campus level to contribute to it? This is what the research says really matters to teachers. Personal safety and belonging, of course. Maslow's hierarchy, the most fundamental aspect of teacher morale. Time and resources. Leadership trust and values alignment. Ownership and input. Recognition and value. And professional growth. Those are the things that the research proves are the most impactful levers that affect teacher morale. And that is what the questions in the survey, as well as the focus group questions focused on. You'll notice candy bars aren't listed here. You'll notice that jeans passes aren't listed here. And those are wonderful things that lift people's spirits for the moment. The things listed on this slide are the things that really lift people's spirits long-term in a significant and substantive way. So in October, we surveyed our teachers using the EAB Bank of Questions that I referenced previously. In the end, approximately 1,300 teachers participated. And to begin, this slide shares with you the good news. The majority of our teachers expressed significant satisfaction with the district and the school. We received reinforcement for a number of great things in Mesquite ISD. Teachers told us that they really feel like someone cares about them. They feel safe in our schools. They have the resources and training that they need. They believe they're treated fairly. They have ownership over their work. They have opportunities to grow. They appreciate the transparency of district leaders and their efforts to solve challenges. And they believe in the district's mission, and they are committed to it. So there was a lot of good news through this Part One, the survey that we sent out. But what we really need to take into our minds and our hearts is the things that matter most to teachers that are of greatest concern to them. So that's what the majority of these remaining slides will cover. This one, "Most days I have a manageable workload." Well, 41% of our teachers don't feel they do. This next slide, "My opinions are heard and valued." 22 to 24, depending on if they're talking about district leaders or school leaders, don't feel like their opinions are heard or valued. Teachers are recognized for excellent work. And again, this breaks it down between district leaders and school leaders. 26% and 27% respectively don't feel like they're recognized for their great work. Slide 12 is 30% don't feel valued for the work that they do. 25% feel they don't get recognition. In this next slide, only 37% of our teachers were excited about the rest of this school year, and 24% were concerned. And then finally, our most concerning data point. 31% of teachers often consider leaving the profession due to the stresses of the job, and another 41% consider it sometimes. So significant numbers that, again, very much concerned us and are the reason for this study to begin with. But the data that we found in that initial survey, and these concerns in particular, were exactly the focus of those conversations that Jennifer and Debbie had with our teachers. The trends that came out included workload, outlook about the future, teacher voice, and recognition of excellent work. Those are the things that came up over and over and over again. There were additional data points. For the sake of brevity, I did not include every slide here about every data point from that survey. We're more than happy to share that with you, but again, we pulled out the ones that were of greatest concern, that are the focus of our work moving forward. So these survey trends drove the qualitative phase of our study. And while the study did give us that yardstick to measure and quantify the concerns, we wanted to ask, why is the teacher's outlook dim? What aspects of the workload are the most daunting? In what areas is teacher voice needed the most? What kind of recognition matters to them? So for the focus group participants, there were 81 participants. We strove to have a balance between the school levels. We had 41 at the elementary level, 40 at the secondary level. And we also tried to find a range of years of experience so that we really could get a sense of what newer teachers were experiencing on the job, as well as our more experienced teachers in the district. This one tells us what's one word they would use to describe their experience in Mesquite ISD, and you can see some of those great words popping out in the larger print. The larger print are the ones that were repeated most frequently. Family, supported, growth, positive, comfortable. You see some stretched, caring, proud, empowered. There's a lot of reasons our teachers really want to stay in Mesquite, really appreciate Mesquite, and how they describe their experience here. But when we asked them how many hours on average they spent completing their work outside their contract hours, you can see there is a lot of time spent on work outside the regular school day. This is particularly true for our elementary teachers. If given more time to work in each day, you can see what our teachers would spend their time doing. They'd want to plan and prepare quality lessons, meet with students individually, learn from others, really have time to analyze the data available to them. Those are their top priorities if they had additional time. They did identify the areas of their workload that they thought took the most unnecessary time. And one of the topics that came up most was IO. We're going to talk about that a little bit later on in this presentation. The other one was PLC meetings, the number of meetings, whether or not what they're doing in their PLCs is relevant, the significant amount of pre-meeting work that they need to do in order to prepare for the PLCs. That was a common thread across all of our focus group conversations. There was some concern about the professional learning that we've been providing. Some felt it was irrelevant, some felt it was redundant. So that is something that we need to take further look at to make sure that the professional learning we're offering our teachers is just-in-time training, it's meaningful. learning we're offering our teachers is just-in-time training, it's meaningful training, and it's differentiated. They feel there's some redundancy in data recording and reporting, and lesson plans, the process, and the paperwork. Those are all things that are taking unnecessary time as far as our teachers' perspectives are concerned. The times they felt they were heard by district leaders, overwhelmingly, they referenced the Vader bill passing. Meaning that the concerns that we put out to our community and the fact that the Vader bill passed, Proposition A passed, is something that they felt like was recognition of the concerns that they were surfacing. They also noted Dr. Rivera's communication and listening. There was a lot of praise for the communication around Proposition A, the face-to-face conversations, the personal emails that they're receiving from him. This focus group, meaning the focus groups that Debbie and Jennifer held with the teachers, they felt like that was very symbolic of being heard by district leadership. And they also referenced the hiring of the LRS and LRT teachers to help manage the extreme needs of our students. An area or topic that they believe we should be getting more input from them on, district and campus professional learning days, what they consist of, how they're structured. DCPs, that's our district curriculum checkpoints and the testing calendar. They want more input on the curriculum, district initiatives, and classroom technology and district digital programs. They felt when they received recognition, it came in the form of other teachers coming into their classrooms and observing their work. Walk-throughs that highlighted good things, not just the things that they needed to refine or improve. Awards, just like we had here tonight. First-class Teacher Award, the Apple Core Award, Teacher of the Week, Teacher of the Month, and of course, Teacher of the Year. And badges that they receive. They also appreciate praise and notes from campus administrators, parents, and students. The reasons they continue to work in Mesquite ISD, the areas we need to leverage and continue to build on. The kids need me here. I make a difference. I feel heard and valued. They enjoy the people with whom they work, their campus leadership, their colleagues, the sense of community, the autonomy and flexibility, and the level of acceptance that they have here in Mesquite. The reasons they might consider leaving us for another district include the concerns that they have around student behavior. Some of them mentioned the traffic and commute. There are calendar aspects that they are concerned about. They really appreciate the fact that other school districts have fall breaks or have more days off throughout the school year. They really want more parental support. The hope that potentially workload would look a little bit different in another school district. And compensation was also referenced as a reason to consider possibly leaving. And then the reasons they might consider leaving the profession altogether, and some of it's consistent from the previous slide. Work-life balance, the workload doesn't match the pay, still concerns about behavior, parent support. Texas's approach to education, feeling under the microscope, like there's a lack of respect for educators in general. Change, new initiatives, health concerns, stress. There were some bright spots during those conversations. People had worked outside education who said, you know what? This is a really good thing, and the grass isn't necessarily greener elsewhere. But the reality is, these are very true, honest concerns from our teachers that we know we need to address. So again, what mattered most, the ones that came out of the quantitative and qualitative survey, really fell under the umbrella of teacher time. They wanted more time. And that comes through PLCs, eliminating some of that pre-work, helping them get to the actual planning and delivery of lessons in the PLC so that that time is better spent. Professional learning, making good use of their time so the professional learning isn't redundant, repetitive, and making sure that it meets their individual needs. If they're going to be sitting through professional learning, I want it to be something that actually benefits me specifically. And then the concern around IO was lack of clarity around the purpose. We know IO was rolled out during the pandemic. It was a difficult time to launch a new initiative, and there's been a huge investment in. We believe in what IO is, but we do believe some additional work needs to be done to help clarify what the purpose is for our teachers and to make sure that the rollout really helps teachers feel successful with it. So what are we doing next? EAB really underscores the importance of, and this also makes sense to us, that the solutions need to be co-designed with teachers, that we shouldn't be sitting in a central office, having conversations about how we need to change PLCs, how we need to change professional learning, and what we need to do about IO. We need to get teachers and we need to get administrators, campus administrators, at the table to talk about what really is going on and what really would make a difference. So we are putting together, we already have put together, three different committees, one for PLCs, professional learning, and IO. And they're comprised of campus teachers, campus administrators, and department leaders who are relevant to that particular content area or focus. And they'll be using the research base to develop key strategies that will affect a meaningful change in each of those areas. Once they draft those strategies, we will be soliciting feedback from the focus groups that Jennifer and Debbie had conversations with. This is what we heard you say. This is what our collaborative groups co-created to address the issue. Give us your feedback. Did we hit the mark? Are we addressing things appropriately and at the greatest degree we possibly can? Will we refine any plans based on their feedback? And our goal is to implement in '23, '24. So very clearly, the district leaders who are leading these committees, we have Dr. Feinglass, who is leading the PLC committee for professional learning. We have Dr. Hensley and Dr. Hammett co-leading. And then we have Ms. Kara Jackson, who's leading the IO committee. And they very clearly understand that our objective here is to make sure that we ultimately increase teacher time. For PLCs, they need to be differentiated, eliminate redundancy, and we need to have prioritization on planning and delivery. Those are non-negotiables. Our teachers have to go into next year feeling, recognizing, seeing a very noticeable difference when it comes to how we approach PLCs and Mesquite ISD. For professional learning, also differentiated, prioritizing content. That means some stuff has to go away. We can't possibly do everything that we've been doing historically and honor the teachers' needs here. So some things are not going to be on the list for professional learning. I've also listed the Holdsworth PL model here. Holdsworth outlines what meaningful PL looks like. 10% of PL that really makes a difference comes from traditional trainings, where you go to sessions and you hear an expert talk about whatever it is you're supposed to be learning. 20% is learned from mentors or people who are helping you prepare for the next job or the current job that you have. But 70% is job embedded. What you are learning on the job is really what makes the biggest difference. And so while we might not, this summer, be exactly at a 70, 20, 10 model, that is our goal. Our goal is to get much closer, more weight on job-embedded professional learning while teachers are in the classroom, delivering instruction, preparing their lessons. That's where we need to be supporting them, not just sitting in workshops. And with IO, our plan is to reset with a pilot. We have already identified campuses that have volunteered to be part of a pilot reset of IO. So we're going to start from the beginning and work with those campus administrators and campus teams to set their own individual pace for how they're going to move forward with IO, to make sure that people really understand what is the purpose? How is this good for kids? And again, so teachers can feel successful in it. And again, the goal, the expected outcome, is for teachers to have increased time. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, I want to thank you for this work. This has been a challenging season for us. I think our community has heard some of this and heard from us on this. We asked a lot of questions over the last couple of months. What you probably didn't hear was the board had kind of talked to Dr. Rivera and to you and others, realizing this problem about teacher time. And we said, let's try to figure out a way to fix this. We have the most creative people in the world. Let's get this fixed. One of those considerations was the calendar, and everything was on the table. We said, nothing's off, we're not going to leave anything on the floor. Everything's up for discussion. And so as we've gone through this, I really appreciate what you've done. This survey bears out what we hear at Albertson's and Tom Thumb. We all know that, and you're working on it, and we're making some big changes. Obviously, now we're going to make all the changes that everybody thought they wanted. But we're not stopping tonight either. We're going to keep being creative. We're going to keep finding solutions to this because we do value our teachers. After our students, they're our most important asset. And so I want to thank you for this. And the catalyst for all this work was the board's conversation with Dr. Rivera. We need to find a way to fix this for our teachers. And we're getting there. So don't give up on us. We're going to keep working on it.
Thank you. It's a tough conversation to sit and listen to people explain to you the pain points, the things that hurt. I would like to see the more solution-oriented focus of it. That's coming next, because this felt very much reactionary and that if we're going to move forward, it's got to be solutions-driven. And I think there's a danger in being reactionary. I am so thankful that we got to see it and that there was a spread amongst the grades and secondary and elementary to see what people were saying. But some of the things that people were saying on both sides fell into multiple categories.
I'd like to speak to that for just a moment. So we started this work back in October, and it has been a lengthy process, but it has gotten us to what the true teacher needs are. What you just said, though, about overlap, these three different buckets or areas that we need to focus on, they do kind of run parallel to each other, but they also cross over each other in a number of ways. And that's why those three different sets of leaders who are leading the committees are meeting before and after every meeting to set their agendas. Let me give you an example. Sometimes what we end up doing in PLCs is really what we might have considered more traditional professional learning. Or what we're having to cover in PLCs is because it's something we didn't get to in our professional learning. And so we're making up for it on one end or the other. For example, if you have a grade level where you have novice teachers, people new to the profession, what you end up doing in your PLC might be different than what you are doing in a PLC with experienced teachers. And so we want to make sure that while we're tackling professional learning and onboarding those novice teachers, we're thinking about also what are the PLC needs? I don't know if that was a clear explanation, but we know that there is so much overlap that the leaders of these committees need to be talking to each other every step of the way so that we have a coherent plan where all of the different pieces complement each other and ultimately end up achieving our goal.
I know that having the tough conversations is very important, and we've had them before, so I appreciate you continuing having them because that's the only way we succeed. What I was going to ask you is, if you could elaborate a little bit on the AO, you're having to reset with the pilot campuses, because this is something we looked at, we worked on, and we thought we were ready. So I would like to know a little bit more of what we plan to do.
The IO resources and the IO platform are very fully developed. I mean, all the pieces really are in place. But what has happened over the course of the last few years, IO was implemented very quickly. And because of, unfortunately, the pandemic, the form of professional learning that took place around IO wasn't necessarily the most effective delivery. For example, if you have leaders of leaders on campuses who were supposed to deploy it, or if you flip professional learning so some of it is through technology versus in-person, you have an inconsistent rollout across the campuses. So I would say because of the speed and the timing and how that affected the delivery of the professional learning and the teachers' deeper understanding of what we're trying to accomplish with IO, we aren't where we need to be. So the campuses that have made greater ground with IO and are receptive to investing their campuses significantly in the reimbursement or the restart of IO are the ones who have volunteered to partner with Ms. Jackson and her team to shore up that foundational understanding, the very beginning part of the professional learning that they need to have in place for IO, and then setting the pace to move forward to make sure that we have good, solid implementation and can share to teachers and administrators on other campuses, this is what IO has done here. So we have the success stories to show them, this is what it looks like, this is how our students are benefiting, this is what our teachers are doing. So it's just slowing the roll a bit and making sure that we really shore up the understanding and provide the training that's necessary for them to understand it well. And I also want to say, there's no criticism of any of our team leads on campuses or in our district-level team in the launch of IO. It's just one of those things where we've identified there's a gap in understanding, and we just need to go back and shore it up. Everybody, I think, poured their heart and soul into launching the IO platform. We just have some additional work to do to make sure that we yield the greatest benefit out of this huge investment from the district.
The PLCs, I have been a part of them, and I like them very much. But I understand an elementary PLC and a high school PLC look very different. I hope that when we strategize and do, that you look at each individual piece very strategically because I understand it is very much of a time consumer. So I look forward to seeing how you guys are going about changing or strategizing with PLCs. They are important. I get it. But you've got all these other meetings you have to go to too as a teacher, as a classroom teacher. So I'll be interested in listening and seeing how these work throughout the year as you talk.
And to Ms. Collier's point, I mean, tonight's presentation is about the findings from the survey.
Sure.
It's about the trends and the concerns. The solutions haven't yet been developed, and I certainly don't want to get ahead of the co-creation and the committee work. But as soon as we have those solutions developed, we'll be coming back to the trustees and sharing that with you.
We would like to.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Mr. Rowe?
I know we've heard from a lot of folks this week in regards to the calendars and the different schedules going on. And this speaks a lot. A lot of this information is good information, and all of us have heard this week from employees and other folks saying, hey, when it came to the four-day calendar, we thought you were listening to us, and now you're not listening to us anymore. And it's not necessarily true. This is, I've described a district like Mesquite as a cruise ship, even though there's not a party on the Lido deck. There's all the time. There's always something going on. But the point is, it doesn't turn on a dime. Time is the big motivator. And if I heard anything this week, it was, you know what? We don't care about the four-day calendar, whatever. If you can't give me time, I can't do my job. And I think time in that point is, teachers want to see it, and you can't see time. On a four-day calendar, I think they could see the time because the Friday was off. A lot of them said, I was going to work Fridays anyway because that's when I was going to catch up. So teachers want to see the time, and that's what they want the most. That's what I heard this week anyway, was we want to see it in the schedule. We want to see where they're going to give us the time. And I know there's more information coming up on that tonight. But what caught me a while ago was, we all had to learn what differentiation meant. And I know that we try to do that with our students, but are we doing it with our teachers? Not just in PLCs, but in policy and different things. I also had some teachers describe situations where they're required by policy or by somebody's rule to do things a specific way. And like, I can do it this way a lot faster and save a lot of time because that's how I operate versus doing it the way I'm required to do it. Same outcome. Just make sure that we're, if we get the chance, and it's a lot to unpack, but if we can make sure that we're differentiating for them, because they all teach differently as students learn differently. So I appreciate also the information coming out, and just want the teachers to know that we are listening and we are doing the best we can. This is a cruise ship, and we're trying to get it turned in the direction we need. But there's a lot of factors involved in that. So I know there's a lot more information coming here in a little bit about some of this.
Dr. Vera, do you have anything to add?
Yes, sir. First and foremost, I want to thank Jennifer Morris and Debbie Tanton for collecting the qualitative data pieces and the time they invested. If you're listening, I just want everybody to hear that administration had nothing to do with the selection of the people. We don't even know who the people were. In case you doubted, they were self-selected or whatever it was. The facilitators selected the participants. To this day, we still don't know who they are. But if you're listening, thank you for providing the feedback. Much like what Mr. Rowe said, the problems that we're trying to fix, and yes, we're trying to fix them, were not created in the '22, '23 school calendar year. These are problems that have been happening in education for a very year. These are problems that have been happening in education for a very long time. So they will take us time to fix them. But we are willing to fix them and put resources to get that done. All we need is just give us a little grace in terms, as we move forward. The committees that have been assembled, there's teachers in the committees leading this work, not just us in our offices, they haven't been in the classroom since 2000, whatever. But these are people that are practitioners today. Just give us a little bit of grace, and I guarantee you, we will start to see the ship turn. Maybe it will be a party on the Lido deck.
Dr. Fields, thank you for your presentation. Next item on the agenda is an action item. Next item on the agenda is an action item to approve the 2023, 2024 school calendar, Ms. Jobe.
Good evening. I wanted to share a little bit of information with you about this, this calendar that we're proposing this evening. I have a, there we go. And I titled this, How Did We Get Here? Because this has been a very long journey for the past six or seven months. So each time we, each year when we start the calendar process, we start out with some general goals. And we start with a few parameters in mind. Most importantly is ensuring that we meet the instructional minute requirements that are set by TEA. And then we have other parameters that are based on feedback that we have gathered over several years. Ending the school year before Memorial Day. Ensuring the winter break includes three weekends. Providing one week off at Thanksgiving. And we get to start before the fourth Monday in August, that's the date set by the state, but because we are a district of innovation, we have a little flexibility with that. And that certainly helps since we're trying to get out before Memorial Day. And then TEA also asked that we build in two days for bad weather, which we know in recent years has been quite a necessity. So this year, we, we took the approach of creating an innovative calendar design in order to hopefully retain and attract more teachers. And we all know that they are stretched to their limits, as Dr. Fields mentioned in her report just now. As you already know, we've worked through at least 20 different configurations and most recently spent a great deal of time on the four-day, four-day instructional week. But as we continued down that path, we learned of additional research that indicated that a four-day instructional week might negatively impact our student population. And there were larger obstacles such as impacts to our special education program that gave us a pause. So last week we shared that we were abandoning, abandoning the four-day idea for now, but that we will continue to pursue innovative ideas that are included in the proposed draft we bring to you tonight. So based on feedback from our teachers, including the information that Dr. Fields shared tonight, we prioritized designated planning time for our teachers, especially at the elementary level, a focus on work-life balance by including more frequent breaks and additional days off for students and staff throughout the school year. And we have a strong effort to create more embedded professional learning days in the calendar. And essentially, it all comes down to time. So let's take a look at days versus minutes. Back in 2015, the legislature approved House Bill 2610, which altered the Texas Education Code to focus on instructional minute requirements rather than days. And we've all been working off that, that model since then as we create our calendars. But one problem that we consistently run into each year is that teachers are still on contracted days. So minutes and days don't always add up, so to speak. TEA requires us to provide at least 75,600 minutes of instruction each school year. There is also an extra wrinkle in that, in that formula because we have to provide 8,100 career and technology education minutes for our students. And that should equal 450 minutes every 10 days. That number was actually raised this year, so we were actually having to provide more CTE minutes. So even though we may have figured out the, the instructional minutes, we might have had to add more during each class period to meet the CTE minutes. It's a complicated formula. But we also have the ability to provide, to provide for a staff development waiver, and that way we can exchange up to 2,100 minutes of instructional minutes for professional learning. So here's the proposed draft that we bring to you for approval tonight. And of course, you have a copy of this in your agenda. This draft meets the requirements for instructional minutes and CTE minutes, and it ends prior to Memorial Day. Referring back to the idea of granting time, we extended fall break to a full week. And that's been a request we've had for many years. We also provided two four-day weekends in the spring semester to address feedback that we needed more time off in the spring. The spring tends to be very long because there are more breaks in the fall. So we added two four-day weekends. We also designated one day each month, with the exception of October, for professional learning and PLC training, planning, excuse me, PLC planning. And as Dr. Fields mentioned, there are three committees that are charged with examining and refining our professional learning schedule as well, as well as some other areas where we know there are concerns. And more details will be coming about that. I can tell you that next year, the district and campus professional learning will be limited to no more than one half-day, with the remainder of the day allocated for PLCs or other teacher planning time. And there are always trade-offs. Whenever you add something to the calendar, sometimes you have to take something away or vice versa. To build in the additional time this year and still meet the minute requirements, do all the other things that we talked about, we must extend the school day by 15 minutes this, this coming year. And I also just want to mention that the high school grading period, I'm sorry, the high school block schedule and the grading periods are not included on this draft, but they will be once we approve a calendar. So let's talk about the length of the school day. So you might be wondering how that compares with other districts in our area. And I can tell you, for the current school year, MISD has the shortest school day of any of the districts that I'm going to show you. And that is currently at seven hours and 15 minutes. So here's a comparison table that shows you some of the other districts nearby or in the metroplex. The shortest day will now be seven hours and 20 minutes, followed by seven hours and 25 minutes, and we, where we are at seven hours and 30 minutes. These are some other districts that actually have a longer school day than we have. And I like to point out at the bottom, Terrell has just announced that they're going to a four-day instructional week. That's why their day is so much longer because they're having to cram more minutes into a week. This is the most current information that we could find, but we feel confident it's validity.
Is that, is that, the seven hours and 30 minutes, is that currently, or if we adopt this calendar, we will be at seven hours and 30 minutes? Question. Yeah, currently we're at 7:15. Okay, this next slide, I'm going to spend a little bit of time on because it actually compares the, our current year calendar with the four-day draft we were considering and the proposed draft that we're bringing to you this evening. And there's some significant details I'd like to point out. Line two shows the number of instructional days or touchpoints with students. And there are significantly more opportunities with the proposed draft we submitted today versus the four-day draft. On lines five, six, and seven, there are some similarities between the four-day calendar and the proposed draft, including the same reporting day for teachers and the same first and last day of school. Line eight has perhaps
the most surprising information, at least it was for me. Because of the additional student and staff holidays that we have included on the proposed calendars, teachers will actually work only nine more school days during the year than they would have on the four-day calendar, with a significantly shorter workday. And that's shown on line 10. I also want to clarify line four. On the four-day draft calendar, one Friday each month was designated for remote teacher planning time for a minimum of five hours per day or 50 total hours. On the proposed draft, we have actually given credit to teachers for five days, five full days or 40 hours of work, because we know that they spend that time outside of, of work anyway, doing their, their teacher work. That was shown in Dr. Field's report with the amount of time teachers spend each week outside of class. So on the proposed calendar, teachers are scheduled to work 182 days, which is five fewer days than the traditional 187. And as you can see here, that credit is approximately 40 hours. I want to stop here just a minute. Do you have any questions about that? Because I know there's a lot of information on this particular slide. Is there anything I can clarify?
There was a lot of questions and a lot of feedback and comments we got. There was some confusion about... The five days in, in, you and I talked about some of that with the 40 hour, if there's going to be some other explanation of that, or what was the confusion about some of that?
To be honest with you, I wasn't sure what some of the confusion was relating to. The, the five days are basically, rather, rather than working for 187 days, scheduled days as they would normally be, we are giving them credit for five days. So they're actually only coming to work 182 days during the year. So they're getting paid for 187 because they are paid a daily rate at a contractual basis. And five of those days are just credited to them.
So you're, you're paying them for the time they're already working at home?
Correct. Because we know that they are working at home. We know that they are coming in probably before July 31st to set up their room or to meet with their team or something like that, or grading papers after school starts. Or we know that that time is being done, and so we're giving them credit for five full days of work without having to come to the, to the district. Okay. We talked a lot about school day schedules as well. And this is something I wanted to bring to your attention tonight. We received a great deal of feedback about since releasing the four-day schedule where we flipped the high school and elementary start times. And it was very clear that there was a lot of concerns about putting high school first at 7:30. So we have abandoned that plan, and we are going back to putting elementary school first. In our initial draft of this calendar that went out last Thursday to our staff and our parents, included a 7:30 start time for elementary students. We, we are since revising that for your, for your view tonight, and we would like to propose that that start time be 7:40 in the morning and continue until 3:10, which is the current dismissal time for elementary. The other campuses will fall in line on, according to their normal schedule. Okay. So middle school would start at 8:10, high school would start at 8:30. On elementary school, more planning time for each week will be created by adding more fine arts and PE classes, which are some of the things that we talked about in the VADER campaign. In middle school, we will be standardizing an eight-period day for all middle schools. Some of our middle schools have seven periods, some have eight. We're going to be standardizing that and then making sure that one period each day is reserved for PLC planning for our core subject areas. And then in high school, we are planning to remain on the block schedule this next year with one conference and PLC planning period each, each day. And there will some, some variations will occur at high school due to extra sections and that sort of thing. But you can see, we're really trying to build in more time, as we said.
I'm glad you're putting that there because I had a lot of, I had teachers ask me about block time, if they were going to use the block schedule or not.
Well, as we said, we've been looking at every, everything was on the table. And so we, we've decided that we're going to stick with block schedule for next year.
What was the reasoning for that?
I'm, I'm not actually sure, to be honest with you. I wasn't involved in that particular decision.
Quick questions. We may get to this in a minute, but I'll open this up to anybody's. I know that, like for the high school schedule, you're going to do one block conference period for planning, but I think the, the teachers know that the problem we have now in providing that is, we have to cover classes. So at some point, how do we, I mean, we can't promise them that block because you're one high school track meet away from losing coaches out of the, off-campus to have to go to that for a day, and then you're having to cover classes again. So I think that's what some of the folks out there want to hear tonight is, okay, you're telling me I'm going to have a planning period, but is there a guarantee? How are we going to make that actually happen when it comes down to the school year as far as staffing and covering classes on campus and things like that?
Well, one of, Mr. Rowe, one of the things we, that's why the, the professional learning, that, that month that we're actually proposing is not going to be solidly blocked. We're actually, the committee, hopefully, will come out with some guidance on what to establish to actually give time. So if you have PL in the morning, in the afternoon, you can go back and actually have time to plan because there are no kids on those, on those days. Because we don't have to worry about coverage on this particular, and if you have PL in the afternoon, then you will plan and have that time in the morning. The rest of the time, you're right. We, we are actually adhering to what subs are available in the building and to that nature. So I know later on, we're going to talk about some of the ideas that we have to increase teacher, teacher attendance and all that. But there's probably not a way to say 100% certainty that all the positions will be filled and that all the subs will be covered for the teachers that are absent. You're absolutely right.
I want to talk a minute about daily work hours because this is some of the questions that we have received the past week or so. I want to talk about campus professionals, meaning teachers, counselors, those types of positions. They are actually paid an annual salary that, as we mentioned, includes a daily rate for 187 days over a period of 10 months. And their workday should be the length of the school day plus additional time before or after school, and that is determined by the campus principal. I want to make that very clear. The campus principal is the one who decides what time teachers should report to work, what time they can leave work, and any extra duty assignments that are distributed among teachers or paraprofessionals on campus. We also have campus paraprofessionals, and they are paid for 7.5 hours of work per day or 37.5 hours per week. They get 30, 30 minutes for lunch each day, and they are paid for extra duty assignments. They may earn also overtime and comp time beyond their scheduled hours with their supervisor's approval. So that is one important difference I'd like to make between salaried employees versus hourly employees. Salaried employees are not eligible for comp time, overtime, that sort of thing. And there is some, some impacts to specific groups with this calendar. First, the 187-day campus paraprofessionals. This is your office staff, your classroom aides, that, those types of positions. They also work 187 days. They are also scheduled for 187 days during the school year, much like teachers. But they have to clock in and out to substantiate their hours due to labor loss. The proposed calendar has 182 workdays for teachers, as we've discussed. So here we have a bit of an issue because teachers are there 182 days, but paraprofessionals need to work 187. So our solution to this issue this year would be to ask our paraprofessionals to come to work, to report to work on July 24th, which is actually one week before teachers report. And the reason for this is because, number one, as I said, they have to clock in and out to get their hours. They actually have to be physically at work to get those hours in. And that is an extremely busy time on our campuses. So they are, they can help with enrollment, they can help with preparing for new teachers as they get used to their campus. All kinds of things are, are taking place before school starts. And we feel like they can be a tremendous asset to the campus principal at that time. Also allows them to get their hours in. Because we certainly don't want them to be, to lose any pay.
Why wouldn't you just slide it to match the other, the other number? Like, why would you just, why would you not put it at 182 to 182?
Because we need to pay them for 100. If we only pay them for 182 days, they would be losing pay.
Because bringing the teachers out to make sure we're all...
Correct.
But why wouldn't you do five, since you're comp, not comping, that's not the right word. You're adding five in. Why wouldn't you add five in?
Because these, because paraprofessionals are paid hourly and they're in a distant, different classification, they're non-exempt. They actually have to clock in and out to earn their hours. We can't, we can't just give them away.
Yeah, they have to labor laws. And if they don't clock in and out...
That's something that we just don't have control over.
I, I understand that. I do understand that. What I'm saying is that we just said we're trying to do, we just did it with, propose them to do it with teachers.
It's different with teachers because they are not tied to that time clock. They are not paid for, by the hour, they're paid by the day. Whereas paraprofessionals are paid by the hour.
It's a difference between exempt employee and unexempt employee in the corporate group. That's what it is.
I get it.
Well, the teachers are still actually working. They're, they're getting credit for five days of the extra work they do all the time. So that's a little bit different.
It is, it is different, and I do understand it. But at the same time, I've also done both of those jobs. both of those jobs. It is, it has a balance to it.
And, and we do want to say that we value what our paraprofessionals contributed to that campus every day. We could not run without them. So that's why we wanted to, to put in this extra week that allows them to earn that additional five days of pay so that they can be made whole with their contract.
And Ms. Jobe, and we've gotten a lot of emails since we sent this proposed and proposed calendar especially about the starting early for paraprofessionals. And I just want to be, wanted to be public if they're, if they have a trip because a lot of them, they're, we're not expecting to be back. We're going to work with every single case that, so they, the whole intent was for them not to lose compensation because of the labor laws. And so we will work with them. Unfortunately, it's a new calendar year, so there should be no comp time. If they would have had comp time, we would have probably credited them for five days of comp time because it's a new budget year. They have not had the chance to earn comp time, but we, we would work with them to ensure that they accumulate that to get up to five days so they will not lose compensation. That's the way that we can work with them, but they will not have that upfront because as Mr. Carbo was saying, they're hourly employees and then have not had a chance to build that comp time pool. But we will give them that opportunity to make sure they can use it on the other side of the calendar if need to.
I was talking with Ms. Jobe about this earlier in the week, and I think there's some, potentially some exciting things we could do with our paras that week, back-to-school type things, and we're going to try to work on some ideas for that, too.
Absolutely.
Create some opportunities.
I'm excited to see how that all plays out.
Let's let Laura finish your presentation and then...
I'm nearly finished.
And then we will, we will hear from the audience before we engage in any further conversation.
Okay. Another group of employees that this affects differently this year is our 226-day employees. That's about 350 people in the district. These are your year-round people, typically central office people. And we are required, we have 226-day contracts. We are required to work 226 days during the school year. By putting in the additional student and staff holidays on this proposed draft, it only left us with 224 possible days to work. So we owe the district two days, basically. The easiest way to resolve that problem is the way that we used to do it several years ago with the first two days of Thanksgiving break now being workdays. We work those two days, we've given the district back the two days that we owe them, and everything comes out even. For those who, who want that whole week of Thanksgiving off, we are certainly flexible with that. They can use local or state personal days to, to take those two days off, or they can substitute goal days. And I'm not going to get into the whole goal day thing, that would be a huge rabbit trail. But it's, it's what we give 226 year-round employees to have some flexibility with their, with their days off. So, any questions I can answer that I haven't already?
We'll, we'll open it up to the audience right now. We have three cards, and I'd like to read something from our BED local policy regarding public, public comment. Participation in public comments shall be limited to district students and their parents, district employees, residents of Mesquite, or owners of businesses located in Mesquite. So these three cards, hopefully those, that policy applies to you. First person is Jennifer Mann. You will have three minutes, Jennifer, and the board will not engage in dialogue with you, but we'll be glad to hear you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, Superintendent Rivera, distinguished guests, and all that have gathered here this evening. My name is Jennifer Mann. I teach first grade at Price Elementary. I am also a resident of the city of Mesquite. Thank you for allowing me time to address the board from a teacher perspective about our 23-24 school year calendar that is being discussed this evening. I want to start by saying I do not envy being in your position. I understand that hard decisions need to be made this evening. However, it seems as though the teacher's voice has been overlooked with regard to the most recent calendar changes. Teacher input was initially gathered via the staff survey, but it seems to have been disregarded. No teacher input was gathered regarding start times, and no teacher input was gathered regarding longer school days. I believe that the biggest factor in helping our students to be successful in their educational endeavors is access to a fully certified classroom teacher. Emergency certification and uncertified classroom teachers are not the standard that we want to set for the future of MISD students and their success. Filling our classrooms with uncertified teachers is simply a Band-Aid that is sure to be ripped off swiftly and can only further impede our students' learning. The small fixes that have been implemented by MISD may not be enough for those of us that are left. We have to cover classes. We take on extra classes during our planning time. We spend our conferences, as was discussed this evening, in PLC, following, completing other required meetings, implementing IO, filling out paperwork for different services for students. The time demands are vast. One professional development day per month is not enough to address the day-to-day needs of this job. At the end of the day, it seems like there's a lot of great ideas that are going to be implemented at the state and district level, but at the end of the day, it all rolls downhill into the laps of our teachers who are already overburdened. I'm also concerned with the number of three-day weekends and long breaks that we are having. These extended times often make it difficult for my first graders to remember what we were doing before we left. I know many of my colleagues, and surely some that will speak this evening, were in favor of the four-day week. I just want you to know, I was not. To be clear, I believe that that four-day week would be detrimental to elementary students, but I'm even less in favor of an earlier start time. I thought our start time was 7:30. I'm pleasantly surprised to hear a 7:40 start time, but it's just too early for my littles. They're tired, they don't want to get up, they're having a hard time staying awake in class. I believe that our attendance and tardy issues will only be magnified with an earlier start time. I thank you for your time and consideration in this matter, and I pray that you will be willing to consider the implications that the extra time will take away from or alleviate any of our day-to-day struggles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mann. Next person to address the board is Ashley Hall. Ms. Hall, you'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. My name's Ashley Hall. I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Tosh Elementary. I'm also an ETIP classroom scholar, an ETIP teacher, a first-class teacher recipient. I've served on several district committees. I've worked for the district for nearly a decade now, and I'm also a K through 12 Mesquite ISD alumni. I, I thought you heard my concerns regarding the, I adjusted, the 7:40 start time for the elementary schools for the 23-24 school year. A potential 7:10 reporting time puts a burden on staff members who are both commuters and parents. Any parent who has children in daycare is going to struggle with dropping their children off and getting to work on time. Many of the local childcare centers and providers don't open their doors until 6:45 or later. On top of that, many of us then commute 30 minutes or more, and that's not including traffic. It's my understanding that MISD is working to improve teachers' work-life balance, and in my opinion, this is moving away from that balance. Personally, I have two children, one of school age and another an infant. If we were to implement a 7:40 start time next year, I would need to leave my nine-year-old at home at 6:20 and expect him to feed himself, get dressed, comb his hair, brush his teeth, and get out the door to the bus stop, all on his own without the direction of an adult. The other option would be to enroll him in morning childcare, neither of which make it easier on me because it, it could potentially add a financial burden. There's also the issue of my infant daughter's care. The childcare that I currently lined up for her next year doesn't start until 7:00 AM, which means I would have to find a different childcare provider. And if you haven't done that recently, it is a nightmare. Many of the reputable places are at capacity, and they're wait-listing potential enrollees. I'm only one of the hundred, hundreds of employees that will be facing these same challenges if this start time is adopted. And I, I can't speak on how others will face this challenge, but I know it's one that every MISD employee with, with young children who don't attend the same school, they will be struggling with. So again, this change in the start time moves further from that work-life balance, placing undue stress on already overworked employees. And I ask you to consider keeping the current start time of 7:55 and adding the additional 15 minutes to the end of the school day. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration on this concern.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. The last person to fill out a card, all I have is Rachel. Is Rachel here? Okay? Does anybody else in the audience wish to address this board regarding the 2023-24 school calendar? We'll, we'll hear from you now. Okay, if not. Board, do you have any questions or discussion for Ms. Jobe or Dr. Rivera?
Tell me the rationale on the 7:40.
So many of you know that a lot of, the, when we added the 15 minutes, we're currently now struggling with the, with the evening, evening activity with the buses and athletics and everything. And, and Mr. Morris can talk a little bit more about that since supervisors, that, but we're barely making it now. We're adding, we're adding one more campus, cross elementary, more routes. It's a logistic decision at this point to ensure that we have. And so if you add time to the day to meet the minutes and all the information that was added here from either Dr. Field's study and, and Ms. Jobe's, the only way to accommodate that is go back. And so we push it down 10 minutes from the 7:30, which puts it right where we are now. And Mr. Morris, you think that's, that's going to work? And so any, anything further, pushing it further back will probably not, not work because of the transportation.
Buses.
Buses.
The current start time is 7:45?
Well, now for elementary, it's 7:55. 7:55 is the current start time.
First bell rings at 7:45.
And, you know, there's some misconception out there about that teachers have to be to work. We were going to talk to the principals about 30 minutes before. There's, I know when I was a principal, we had rotating schedules of, of people being on duty, so we'll, we'll try to work that out, but we don't set the time that the teachers get back, get to work. It depends on what duties they adopt on the campus. But we do recognize that with a 7:40 start time, they have to be there work a little earlier, of course, 7:55, 7:40. That's at least 15 minutes earlier, but it's basically because of the transportation. We have to get kids to and from school either in the morning and the afternoon in a three-tier system.
That's what administrator discretion, that's what was reported.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I do have one more question. I've just thought about, so we, we've got three, three extra days added in the calendar for weather. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So those are not required days or extra days as far as the minutes and what we're required for instruction?
We have three buffer days.
Because I didn't know the TDA required us to put in two. So does that mean we still have three extra days or one extra day?
One. And have you noticed, the last three years, we've used all three days like we did this, this year?
Yeah, it's been...
It's been a pattern.
It's been different. I would make a comment, say the global warming's good, but it's not. Is there a way, once, say we get to spring break at the end of the calendar year and we haven't used those days? Is there a way to, to do a shift in the calendar to add some early release days towards the end of the year if we've got that extra day left over? Or is that something we, is that...
Well, this board approves, approves the calendar, and so this year...
But we also, it's a cruise ship, and we can't turn it sometimes on a dime. Is, is there a possibility if we have those days that we haven't used to add some more time, early release days for students to give teachers time in the classroom?
I mean, I will say there's always a chance to do that if the weather permits.
Correct.
But this year, we still go half a day for secondary.
We're still a half a day in arrears, but just going forward, is there, just is there the possibility if, if we wanted to, hey, you know what? We got the spring break, we didn't use a day, let's have a couple of early release days towards the end of the year.
I wouldn't be against it.
This is an action item, board. You know, there's no, no calendar that this board of trustees has ever adopted that pleased every employee in the district. And, and this is a difficult situation for us. We've heard a lot of comments, emails, some of us have received telephone calls, we've had conversations with employees in grocery store, like Gary said. But this is a calendar that Dr. Rivera and his staff have recommended, and so...
Mr. President, we've seen big fight over one issue.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah. I have one other question. Are we lining up with the other districts on spring break next year? I'm catching it big time at church about this this week.
I can't speak for all of them, but I know, I want to say we're aligned with...
The districts that count?
I, I can't recall this time. I know we are aligned with some, let's put it that way, in some cases.
Boy, it's a mess.
But just to reiterate, we are, our spring break, all is driven by dual credit in when Dallas County colleges have spring break.
Yes, we must align with Dallas County because of dual credit. Brockwell and Florrie are the two that, that come to mind, and I think we are aligned, at least on spring break with those, but, but I can't recall at this time. Apologize.
Yeah. Mr. President, I, and I just want to reiterate the comments that you just made, all the conversations that we've had, all the information we got from administration. I keep looking in our book, our objectives, on Teacher and Learning, that says every learning environment will be conducive to innovative instructions and meet the social, emotional, and academic needs of our students and teachers. And we keep that in mind when we're doing, when we're making decisions that are going to affect our teachers and students. So I, I want to make that public so, so that people know that we're really looking at every facet, every piece of information that we could find to make this happen. With that, I would like to move that we approve the 23-24 calendar.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Carbo and a second by Ms. Collier to approve the 2023-24 school calendar as presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is a report on teacher compensation preview for 2023-2024, and we'll hear that from, from Dr. Hensley.
Good evening, President Everett, Dr. Rivera, and members of our board. It's my pleasure this evening to present to you a preview of our enhanced teacher compensation features for the school year 23-24. And so I'll start with a $61,000 starting teacher pay. That's for our zero-year teachers in Mesquite ISD. And this year, it was 57.4, and so that's an increase of $3,600 for our zero, zero-year teachers coming to Mesquite ISD. Next, it's a 6% minimum raise for our current MISD teachers. We also are working on the details of a new attendance incentive pay program, and this will put up to $1,000 into teachers' pockets for good attendance. After that, we want to highlight something that most districts don't do, and I'm proud that ours does, and that is our care clinic where we offer free counseling services to our employees, and that is a rare thing. Also, the other rare thing that we do in Mesquite ISD that I'm proud of is our Employee Health Center, where we provide them our clinic resources and our pharmacy. In addition to that, we have state pay in Mesquite ISD, and so that is $5,000 for every five years of service in Mesquite ISD. Beyond that, I was really proud of this as I came to Mesquite. Again, another rare thing that you don't find in many other districts, and that is payment for unused state sick, local sick, local personal, and state personal leave days upon retirement. It's a wonderful benefit. Beyond that, we recognize that there were some high-need area stipends that we needed to address. So the first one is our bilingual stipend. We've increased that. We've increased that. That was $3,000, and we're increasing that to 4,000. And then we had two stipends that we've not had previously in Mesquite ISD. And so one is for our special education self-contained teachers, and that will be $3,000. And then our special education inclusion teachers, and that will be $2,000. And then beyond that, our E-Tip program, which allows our teachers to receive up to $12,000 annually. And we heard, I think, one of our teachers this evening, our core, or one of our speakers talked about E-Tip and her participation in that. So anyway, another item to be proud of. So at this time, I'd be happy to take any questions that you have about our compensation preview for the 23-24 school year.
If I remember right, Dr. Rivera, it says 6% minimum raise. We're giving a larger raise for tenure for people in that have been here longer, correct?
Correct, Mr. Bingham. For the first time in comparison to any of the district around us, the minimum raise that a teacher will receive in that zero years is a 6%. But once you hit five years, it's a significant, it's 8.3%. You're not, you're not hearing correctly, it is 8.3%. So our veteran teachers that have been in the district, our MISD teachers, will get a bigger pay increase than our new teachers coming into the profession, unlike any of the districts around us that don't do that. They actually gave a bigger increase to their novice teachers.
Right.
And we're reversing that, right?
Yes. We are rewarding experience in Mesquite ISD.
I think that's what we needed to do for a lot of years, so I appreciate that.
And I want to also remind the voters that are out there, this is because the Vator passed. We promised teachers significant compensation if the Vator passed. It did, and this is what's given us the money to do this. So thank you.
You know, when when we were on the Proposition A or Vator campaign, we made three promises to our stakeholders. Number one was safety and security upgrades. We're in the middle of doing that. Number two was nonprofessional pay, $15 minimum. We accomplished that. And now it was the time for the teachers to, for us to come true on a promise that we made of teachers about a significant raise. Now, I will say, I have gotten, I have gotten emails from teachers that were telling us that, you know, why don't you put the one-time lump sum payment in our check so it counts for retirement, and then we can actually count for it? When I was on the trail, I told them $60,000. We were going to give them $60,000. So we made 61. We added the one-time lump sum payment, so we will cure for that and account for that from this point forward. And so now it counts for retirement. You can plan for it, and it's something that you're guaranteed, and it's actually taxed at a lower rate. Something else that I've always gotten from emails from staff is, wow, we were getting 1,000, 2,000, but I only got X because it was taxed at a higher rate. Now it's not going to be taxed at a higher rate because it's part of your salary, whichever bracket you fall under, it'll be there. And so this is why we incorporated the payment into the salary calculations. In addition, if you notice, we've also acknowledged the hard work that occurs in special education, self-contained classrooms, and special ed teachers. But we also increased the bilingual stipend $1,000 to go to recognize all the hard work. Mesquite ISD has never given a stipend to special ed teachers, but I've gone into special ed classrooms, and the work that they do doesn't even measure to what we gave them in the stipend, but it's a step in the right direction.
Mr. Rhodes?
Couple of questions. First of all, I'll go on record and say that I disagree with that. I've never, I've never had a teacher in my tenure on the board thank me for the 3% raise, but I get tons of letters and emails about the Christmas bonus because it made their Christmas. That's my personal thing. I just, I wish we could stick with that. I understand the retirement piece. I understand the tax piece, but a lot of folks don't financial plan that way. And I think that that one time lump sum means a lot, especially to our lower-end employees. The other question I have is about the attendance pay. What's the, what's the prognosis on that? Because what I also don't want is for, I understand why we're doing it. We need teachers in the classrooms so the teacher next door can have that planning period and not have to cover your class. So we're talking about giving you $250 per grading period if you don't miss a day. I don't want a teacher to have to wake up at 6 o'clock in the morning with a child with fever to have to make a financial decision. That's what I don't want. And I don't want a teacher, we just came out of a pandemic where we begging people not to come to work sick, to now come to work sick because I've only got a week left and I can get my 250 bucks. So how are we going to address that?
It's a valid concern, and certainly we would never encourage anyone to come to work sick. It is a reset four times a year. And so if you miss the opportunity because of illness during one of the four periods, then you have the opportunity to make that up. And so our staff has an opportunity to reset every, well, four times. And so essentially quarterly, every nine weeks.
But it resets to where at the end of the year, if I missed one, I only got $750.
That is true, sir. Yes, sir.
And actually, if you get every nine weeks, you get it, so it's four times a year, and one of the payments is in December before the holidays. So it's sort of like.
Yeah, but that's unless I woke up with a fever and I can't come to work, and I have an excused absence.
I don't want it to go away because we haven't got a better plan. You know, like I know, we have to take, keep moving forward, taking steps, but I don't want it to go away because we don't have a better plan. We can come up with a better plan, but we should start somewhere and then move forward from there.
Well, at least we can always change it, right?
We can. Yeah.
Let's see how it goes.
See how it goes.
Is there money in the budget? If every teacher comes to work every day for that $1,000, do we have money to cover that in the budget?
No.
But we should start.
I know you're not going to like the answer, but no. If you think about it.
Y'all test him on that. Everybody come to work every day this year, test him on.
But I want to, I wanted to say, because people's like, okay, now remember, the $16.4 million they were allocated for this 23-24 compensation package was not at our grasp last year. So I know a lot of people like, why we haven't gotten paid, or why have we gotten, had a compensation package like this one, because we did not have those funds. If the Vator didn't pass, we will be having a sad, depressing conversation today.
But I'd say that if everybody shows up to work every day and nobody misses, we'll find the money to pay it.
I think we can talk about if everybody shows up to work, I think we can have an amendment from fund balance.
That, but it is, it's an option.
So one more, one more question in all transparency. So in the years past, we've based the lump sum off of depending on how our budget year came out and money's left over.
Actually, no. And I'll give you a historical. So before 2017, actually, let me, let's go back to the inception of the, what they call the bonus, the one-time lump sum payment. It started with $250 in Mesquite, and it slowly evolved over the years to $500. And then with the introduction of the ever-loving ESER dollars, it went up to $1,000, and then in one year, actually got paid twice. But everybody knows what's happening next year. Next year, the ESER dollars go away, and we have zero additional extra money, if you want to call it that, because it was designed for learning recovery. And so if we, it wasn't extra dollars, it was, they, we will budget, and the additional funds that were there, they actually allotted for that money before ESER to give that. So that could have been added to salary, but it wasn't. It was decided to give as a one-time payment. When ESER came, then additional, I mean, ESER 3, $82 million, LRT, LRS, all the other programs that we funded, they, we started adding it as an, as an addition, much needed for the times. But next year, there will be, at the end of next year, there will be a sunset on ESER. There is no more federal dollars. And for every email that we get about the one-time lump sum payment, I get another email about stop insulting our intelligence and put it in my salary if we have the dollars.
I don't get those emails. So I get the other ones.
Yeah, you get the other ones probably, but there's always, it's almost, when it comes to calendar and when it comes to salary, if you give a 7%, I always get an email that says, why don't you give us an 8%? There's never going to be, but we have to be responsible to the entire organization. What can we manage moving forward? Because everybody wants more money, never gotten the email, I'm getting paid too much money. But we also have to account moving forward, taking care of all our staff members, because our first core value is people first. And we can give, and I've said this speech before, we could give a higher, a higher pay raise or one-time lump sum payment, and then we cut staff and we reduce, and there's no transparency there. We're accounting for 100% of our staff members, and when we decide, and so it's accounted already in your salary. But then there's the attendance incentive because we want to make sure that people are at work, but if they're sick, they might miss it for that grading period, but they get an opportunity to get it for the other three grading periods. And we will monitor how it works, and if it's not working, I'm not, I'm not afraid to admit that we were wrong and we pivoted and go in a different direction.
Okay. Anybody else?
Don't want any of that to overshadow. This is an incredible thing.
It is.
This is an incredible thing that the Vader's allowing us to do, all well deserved. Really excited about those stipends for special ed. Really excited about that extra pay for our more tenured teachers. This is, this is huge. So thank you all for working on this.
So the incentive pay is not in your salary? It's a, like a bonus thing?
The incentive pay, no, it's not in your salary. Every nine weeks.
Yeah.
And, and I want to, you know, give kudos to Mr. Prados because payroll's going to have to figure this out. Like, it's a lot, it's a lot of work on payroll. We can criticize payroll, but they've been doing all the, all the heavy lifting. Every nine weeks, we'll run a list who's been there, so they get $250, and it coincides with the ending. So in, in December, well, November, they get one, or December, I don't quote me on the dates, but four times a year, they will get that. And so for a total, if you're 100% there, for a total of $1,000, you miss, you get minus 250, you miss, again, you get $500. But there's, it's an incentive. And if you think about it, because it was asked whether it was in the budget, if we need fewer subs, the money can come out of the sub fund to pay this, so it kind of sustains itself.
This is the, this is the teacher compensation preview. Will we hear another report next month regarding?
Yes, Mr. President. So this is a preview because we wanted to make sure that we, we had this information for recruitment. The important thing is, and I want to make sure that the, the attendance incentive is for all staff, paraprofessionals, teachers, everybody. So it's not just, I know there's, we didn't, we didn't really detail that out. But in April, we will bring a comprehensive compensation package to the board for approval. This is for recruiting purposes.
Dr. Hensley, thank you for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We will go back to the effectiveness report. I know that there are a lot of items on the agenda. I apologize to everyone regarding, we typically don't go beyond nine o'clock, but tonight we are. So next item on the agenda is report on advanced academics. We'll hear from Mr. Weeks. Welcome, Russ.
I should have had more than that apple before the board meeting. Thank y'all for the opportunity, Board, and Dr. Rivera, to share some highlights from my department. Y'all have read my detailed effectiveness report for advanced academics, dual credit, and CCMR, which is a lot of pieces, and they actually come from two different subdepartments of teaching and learning, but they complement each other, kind of like the people in the departments do. I wanted to say there's no I or me in advanced academics, but there is indeed an M, E, and an I in advanced academics. But figuratively, there is not. Tycho Walters and Liz Remler are advanced academics facilitators. Thank you, Liz, for, for being here tonight. Travis Hill, CCMR facilitator, Yvonne Martinez, Nikki Major, and Megan Murfield, and then the living legend that is Donna Maketa. It's nice to just be alive at the same, at the same time as her, but to be, to get to work with her and learn from her is such a gift. So some quick highlights before the video. We identify and serve over 7% GT students in the district. That's above and beyond the 5% that the state allot. Our DC hours were, our students earned 13,623 dual credit hours. That's an increase over last year. A large part of the success of our dual credit programs is that our, we credential, our teachers are credentialed, and they teach the dual credit courses. AP exams taken increased by 190 in 2022, and our earned credits also increased. That's huge. And then our PSAT recognitions based on last year's score, 2021, over 64 students were recognized nationally. Y'all saw them line up last semester. They were recognized here in this room. You saw academic decathlon team advanced to state. This year, they were here tonight. UIL students advanced to state this year in high school, and six of our DI teams advanced to state this year. I'm pretty sure that's more than we've ever had in my tenure over advanced academics. And we couldn't do any of those things without, it's such a wide, vast umbrella, advanced academics. So I'm just hitting on a few things. In the video, I wanted to highlight Ted Madden made me actually be in the video. I didn't want to be in the video, but he said you have to for the transition, so I'm not going to argue with the brilliance of Ted Madden. But to introduce the first segment of the video, this is our first year, we had a UIL A-plus academics for middle school and elementary school. So the first segment in the video is for that, and then I'll introduce in the video the other segments. Roll it.
This is our very first time ever doing UIL A-plus academics in elementary and middle school. The high schools have been working on this for a while, and this is our first time in Mesquite ISD, working on the younger grade levels, building up to that.
I'm really glad to see UIL at Mesquite. It's something that I got the chance to be a part of growing up. It shows students that, you know, you not only compete with sports or athletic abilities, but there are a lot of different talents that you can showcase.
I like to write because it's, I feel like it's easier to express your feelings more than just talking to somebody.
And they treated this as a field trip. They were excited to come out here and compete, and it gives them that spirit that they can do something that others can't or are not good at, but that they shine bright at.
I love that our students are able to compete and show off their skills, like not showing their work in math. That's something that normally they get in trouble for in class.
I enjoy that I am able to like do math and so having to do my work because my teachers are always telling me to show my work. And for me, it's very simple.
It's fun to do because it challenges them academically, because these are skills that rise above what normally would be at their grade level.
All the middle schools weren't here, so we're hopeful that even though at ACU, we want to be the best in the district, we are actually really hopeful that all the middle schools get to participate and that we get to have more and more kids participate.
The energy in this room is electric. The kids had big smiles on their faces. It doesn't feel like a paper and pencil test event. It feels like a celebration of their academic success.
This year, our spelling bee expanded from middle school to grades fourth through eight. We had students from Oxiger and Fraser advance to the county spelling bee. Students expanded their knowledge of spelling and vocabulary, as well as built confidence in speaking and competing in front of an audience.
We are so proud of all of these students here.
The spelling bee is such a great opportunity for students to develop their confidence. I have so much respect for any student who has the guts to stand up in front of a room full of people and put their memory to the test.
My parents were also the one to encourage me to join the spelling bee, like.
My parents were also the one to encourage me to join the spelling bee. When I first told them that I joined, my dad was proud of me, so was my mom.
The kids are excited and they, even our little third graders are saying, next year I get to compete. So instead of being, oh gosh, I have to spell another word or have to do something else. It's not like that. They want to be in the competition.
I love competing and a lot of my friends are really smart and they also love competing. And it's just really fun for all of us to go against each other in a fun way.
They're learning good sportsmanship and several of them wanted to stay even when they weren't, weren't in the spelling bee anymore, to be able to cheer their friends on, their classmates on, their grade level on.
Being in the spelling bee is a good experience for me because I learn, I learn more words so I can use those words to make sentences, like talk, have conversations.
Their confidence went up for sure. I liked that they, their study habits became better.
I felt as a whole, we made all our students participate and it built a sense of confidence in our students and also in our teachers. It built community because we were working with all our students on campus, grade six through eight.
I used to be like really nervous about competing, but I guess it just made me more calmer and it made me realize that I don't have anything to worry about.
I like that I at least made top five and I'm proud of myself.
Students who compete in UIL A-plus academics and the spelling bee are better prepared for challenges as they progress through school. They can continue in UIL events and academic decathlon in high school. Students can also participate in advanced placement and dual credit courses in high school where they can earn college credit and prepare themselves to be successful in their post-secondary endeavors and in life.
I also love teaching advanced because I get to give my kids a glimpse of what college coursework and classwork will look like.
Because I've taken a few regular classes before and they really bore me with the knowledge and it's just like, why do I even want to do this? But with AP classes, I'm actually like, oh, I'm interested in this. This is challenging.
Something I tell my kids at the beginning of every year, especially my freshmen, because it's the first AP class they've ever taken, is you can either be comfortable or you can grow, but you can't do both.
They walk into a classroom with other crazy people that also signed up for a difficult class, so they know that they already have like a level of comfort.
I pretty much enjoy the people that surround, that I'm surrounded by, pretty much people like my friends, the people that are in my AP classes. They push me to be the best that I can and we all share pretty much a common goal into being the best that we can.
The students there, they really want to do the best they can in their classes. I really like that because then it helps me having to be able to be focused and the teachers always keeping us on track and just helping us for our future.
One of the things I love about biology is, is the thinking science. I can take one question and throw it at you in 25 different ways. So the kids get very nimble at thinking on their feet and those are things that they can apply in all aspects of life.
It teaches them how to work harder and be more prepared for just life in general. Life outside of high school is kind of hard and so is my class. And if you can survive my class, you can survive the real world.
I like the pace of the class and how you see other people that are committed to it as well, because everybody else in that class wants the same thing you do.
I love dual credit. AP, one of the things that I've learned and I like about AP is that goes anywhere, right? And as my students score fours and fives, they are able to take that anywhere they want.
When it comes to like financial aid and stuff, having AP classes just on their transcripts for how they've done, give them a better opportunity to be able to earn some more money. AP classes also transfer globally, so these kids are able to take that credit with them anywhere that they go.
I take AP and dual credit classes mainly because it'll prepare me to college courses. For, for instance, like if I take a dual credit class and pass, then I would already get like three extra hours of my, for my college. So, you know, saves money, saves time, so it's a win-win situation.
I've committed to Lamar University and they have sent my transfer credits and I have about 21-hour credits at Lamar. So it's very nice to have dual credit classes and it's preparing me for my future.
Like at West Mesquite, these kids are amazing. Mainly one of the big things is like they don't have that confidence in themselves. They come into it and they want to ask me like, is two plus two four, is that right? And I'm like, y'all know that it is. And so I think the biggest thing for me is building that relationship with my kids and letting them know that like I believe in them and they should believe in themselves.
I definitely love the teachers here in West Mesquite, especially the APs, because they just hope in general, they really do.
So you can see from those teachers, you know, Ms. Browswell at the end with tears in her eyes, how much they care about their students. And our bottom line in advanced academics is that we want to provide those challenges and advanced learning opportunities for all students. And our, our DI team managers, our academic decathlon coaches, our UIL coordinators and coaches, it really just takes a village to be vertically and just both ways all across the district to help students be their best. And I thank y'all for this opportunity. Do y'all have any questions or comments for me?
You know, I'm coming at you. Hey, does every campus have a DI team?
No, but they are, we are, we present and share everything with every campus, but every campus, every year does not have a DI team. That's also why we wanted to offer UIL A-plus academics and spelling bee, and they're both expanding each year, as you saw in the video. Because, you know, not every student wants to go the creative route. Some want to go the more academic route.
I just, that's such an amazing program. And if you talked about Comic-Con earlier, if you want to see Comic-Con at a, at a littles level, go to the state competition at UTA at the end of the month, because that's just amazing to watch. These kids and they're, they're in the hallways and they're practicing and you'll have a group of kids dressed like zombies next to a girl in a wedding dress doing a soliloquy or something. It's just crazy. They're getting ready for their stuff. I would love for that program to grow and, and get more kids involved. I know you've got volunteer coaches and I get that, but if there's anything I can do to help or we can do to help to get programs like that and get more kids in that, it's just an amazing, when you walk into Potteet High School on that Saturday, you just, you can feel the imagination in the hair of these kids doing some cool stuff. We appreciate your hard work on that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks. Next item on the agenda is a report from Technical Services, Jeremy Lewis.
Scott Owen started something.
Yeah, I have to one-up him now.
Welcome, Jeremy.
We do. He's got good taste, doesn't he? All right, let me make sure this thing works. I'll try to be fast. I know it's past my bedtime, so. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to talk about what the Technical Services team has accomplished in 2022. I know you should have received the full report via email, but I'm going to kind of give you a synopsis of that. Since we have about 70 staff members now, it's, it's hard to condense all the great things they've done over the past year into 10 minutes, but I'll talk fast and hopefully I'll have time to brag a little bit on each one. So first, I want to introduce you, introduce you to the network team, if this thing works. The networking team covers everything from keeping all 70,000 MISD computers up to date and protecting our students while they're online and managing network switches and servers. The bigger accomplishments this year for the network team are they upgraded our internet services to 30 gigs of total bandwidth. And that's, to put that in perspective, that's more internet bandwidth. We use that more internet bandwidth every school day than most, than about 500 regular homes. The security of our staff and students is a big focus for the network team. And since our internal email system processes about 4 million emails every month, email security is another big thing that they do for us. And they block almost 400,000 spam messages every day. So keeping the spam out of your mailbox and stopping email attacks is a huge task for these guys. The second subdepartment is our newly created software development group. And the software development group is someone that is, was created at the request of Dr. Rivera, and he saw a need to take control of the costs and the quality of the software that, that we purchased and produce. And so the software development team is brand new. They don't have any successes yet, but they'll be measured by two different metrics in the coming years, and that will, will be automation and software development. And the automation success will be measured by reducing the amount of time that MISD staff spends doing repetitive technical tasks. The, you know, currently working on an automated system to onboard new teachers to make that less frustrating for everyone. The software development will be the creation, the aspect of software development will be the creation of new software that gives the administration insights into how data can be used to grow employees, to aid in the education of our students and to reduce the costs brought about by our employees no longer manually entering into, entering data in manually, which they're doing now in a lot of our systems. Next, I'd like to introduce the computer services team. They consist of a supervisor, mobile technicians that are assigned to multiple campuses and three computer bench technicians. Last year, they completed almost 17,000 work orders and we're excited about a couple of initiatives that we think have improved our abilities to keep students and staff electronics working reliably. We visit every classroom now before campus starts, before the fall semester, to reconnect electronics so that teachers will have a functioning classroom when they return. It seems small, but it, it's a huge thing to, for teachers to walk in and have a computer that's ready to go, everything's ready for them, and all they have to worry about is teaching students. So also this team is taking on the deployment of new computers for staff and students, and this reduces our reliance on contractor dollars and reduces the cost for the district. The audio visual group has had a busy year and you noticed the bow tie is there. The guys wanted to dress up for you. And so I put that, I wanted to include that picture. The, they support everything, high definition video streaming, the bulletin board channel that's broadcast in the Mesquite homes, KEOM and the 500-foot radio tower, the stadiums, host of other things. But they have upgraded our threat management system at six campuses and including a system at North that will give a visual warning to our hearing, hearing impaired students in the event of lockdown or things like that. They also installed high definition video streaming at nine campuses and installed touchscreen televisions and some computer labs for collaboration with students and staff. The next one is the fire and security team, another one of our sub-departments in tech services, and they support all fire, security alarm systems, 4,000 security cameras and provide two mobile security guards for patrolling our campuses after hours and on holidays. And I found out this week that, or about a month ago, that those guys are driving about 30,000 miles apiece in, just inside of Mesquite boundaries at night, patrolling all of the schools and making sure that everything's, everybody's safe. The biggest success in this area is that we hired two state licensed fire alarm technicians on our staff, and this reduces the quality control issues we were having with fire contractors and our fire alarm systems and should reduce our overall costs. Our first year savings are projected to be about $134,000. So we're pretty proud of that, and that's even after you figure in salaries and benefits. The installation team installs our copper cabling across the district. They also pull and splice fiber optics and they install network equipment and they've installed hundreds of new data cables to support our initiative for new security cameras, the esports program and moving computer equipment around for us. So we're really proud of those guys. The help desk, of course, everybody's familiar with. Let's talk about our, that's our first point of contact for anything that's broken technology wise. The help desk created approximately 37,000 work orders this year, and we're very proud of the fact that according to the last survey we did, 96% of our staff are either satisfied or very satisfied with the support from the help desk. Technology Asset Center, we, we actually inherited the technology, technology asset center this past year, and they handed out 25,000 new Chromebooks to students and passed out or processed about 19,000 new iPads, laptops, other electronics. They also generated about $92,000, almost $92,000 in revenue, selling outdated computer equipment back to third-party vendors that we're no longer going to use anymore. So I think that was a, a big feather in those guys' cap. Last but not least is our office staff. No video sitting back there, he's our new director, and he's been doing great things already. He's only been here for a month or two. But they're responsible for managing our personnel and projects, the supplies for our technicians and campuses, managing our federal erate dollars, contract negotiations, timekeeping. And they've also done legal, open records requests for, to the tune of over 50 legal searches in the past year. So that's a, that's a huge task for those people and I'm really proud of them. They also do AutoCAD design work and some other things. So in summary, this, of course, is a small fraction of what we do, but, and what happened this year, but as you can see, our team's been working very hard for the district and for our students and for Mesquite in general, and we hope to do even more in the coming year. So thank you for your time and if you have any questions for me, I'm willing to entertain those. We're very busy. It's, it's crazy busy.
Jeremy stepped in when Clay Coddle's retired and appreciate the good work you do.
Yep, I appreciate Clay. He taught me almost everything I know, so.
Thank you very much. We'll move back to administration to hear a report on the elementary and secondary school emergency relief update from Mr. Riddick. Welcome, Orlando.
Thank you, sir. Well, good evening, Board President Everett, members of the Board of Trustees, Superintendent Rivera, I'm Orlando Riddick, your ESAR Effectness Officer. And tonight, I'm going to walk you through the 2223 middle of the year ESAR report and look to do this quickly so we can move on to the other reports this evening. This report is going to cover several things. One will be a COVID update, which we'll move quickly through the, through the weeks. We'll also have something interesting, which is an internal district audit that was conducted to work with our learning recovery teachers to assess what that work was like. And the final one will be our comparison between our beginning of the year and middle of the year assessment reports. Going to COVID, typically what happens with COVID, when we start the school year, we arrive high and you see that we arrived with upwards of 368 cases that were both student and adult cases. Then we have this considerable, considerable dip. This is a continuous call out and shout out to our nurses and our custodial staff who do a tremendous job as they handle all the different variants that may occur, as well as implement all the strategies that we have in regards to COVID. Reporting to the audit, this was an interesting piece that we conducted this year and Dr. Rivera wanted us to look at in regards to the work that our LRTs are doing. It's, it's a significant piece of our ESAR dollars when we think about ESAR III. And we wanted to go and review what this looks like. Brian Hawkinson, our district, internal district auditor, conducted this audit. This audit was done with four schools, two elementary, a middle school and a high school. The audit comprised of 94 of our LRTs out of 860 LRTs, which is about 11%. Overall, the vast majority of teachers were doing the work that we ask that they do in regards to documenting and delivering the expectations as an LRT. The findings did address two areas that we saw. One that we know that we've had over time, which is student attendance. Student attendance has been very difficult and a challenge in regards to before, after school is the work that our LRTs are, are working around. And we had some inconsistencies, and I would just share that inconsistencies could be from the amount of time, the amount of days, the work that comprised from the very beginning of the year would be very high and strong around the documentation. And as we went through the year going into, towards December, the documentation would drop off and that goes from the attendance. So as an example, a teacher may have had 10 students that were assigned to them, but only one student was regularly attending. So you need to document the other nine students so you can account for why they're not there. And so the repetitiveness of reaching out to parents and emails and phone calls were strong, and then as the year went on, as those students were still not attending, dipped. We have some next steps that we developed coming out of the audit. We met with each campus to leverage opportunities. We allowed the campus to provide context in regards to the audit themselves, so they were able to provide feedback in regards to the information that was coming out. We, campuses met with teachers that were inconsistent in the, in the deliverable. The auditor added access to the, what we call the ESAR Google Drive, and this is the drive where all the campuses have their own individual folders by teacher, by student, and all the data is collected in this folder. That, the audits were provided into the Google Drive, so other campuses could review and look at that work. An email for clarification and for
An email for clarification and for opportunities for success, as well as other, so other campuses could review and look at that work, was, was delivered. Two things that came out of this, or the next three things, was a review of the data. We want to look at the data in regards to growth for students. As I mentioned before, a teacher that may have had 10 students assigned to them, one student was regularly attending, was a student who either grew or passed their latest assessment, this is a high school student in December. And so we want to look at the effectiveness, the effectiveness of the data in regards to our DCPs, our NMSTAR assessments, or campus checkpoints to see what that data looks like in regards to deliverable of the LRT. We also want to look at our student data. Again, we're finding that the student data and the number of students that we need at the end of the day, or beginning of the day, is not where it needs to be. We know also that the legislature is going to have some development and some changes around ESER, excuse me, around House of 45, 45, which will then modify what that looks like. One of those modifications is around science and social studies, which is one of the core areas that we need to provide the tutoring around. Likelihood, those two subject areas could, could be removed, and would only be math and ELA, or reading language arts. This slide I share with you each time, this, these are the learning resources that we have that we evaluate our student data with. We have a Mira, WAGL, iStation, and MAP. This slide, I apologize for it, it's Mira's data and information, it's a little busy. And so what I'll do is typically every time I show this slide, I'll walk us through the top line of the slide so that you can see what that looks like. I've highlighted five areas around the slide to help us navigate the data as well. What you see in blue are the students who previously took assessments, so that would be our BOY data is what you see in blue. Everything to the right of the blue would be all of our information that occurs for our middle-of-the-year. So for example, in the top-left corner, we have students that were one-plus-year behind. That now, that number is now 400 students plus that are in that category, so it was reduced to, by 47% is what that number indicates. If you move all the way across that top line along the, to the green, you'll see that 28% of our students are actually on or beyond the level of proficiency in regards to that work. So these are our first through third graders. If you go to the very bottom, above the orange line, you'll see that the students that are half-year ahead. We did have some regression for some students, and 6% of our students did regress from the BOY to the MOY. The data and the information's more difficult for them to read, and there are some conceptual pieces that they have to be able to respond to in their assessment as they move to the MOY. But what you'll see, which is exciting, is that 80% of our students stayed either half-year ahead in regards to their data and their information. So that was a great thing to see. 65% of our students, if you drop down to the orange line, you'll see that 65% of our students who are in the MOY data are proficient, on level, slightly ahead, half-year behind, excuse me, half-year ahead. Allow you a moment just to look at that. Next I'll cover our fourth and fifth grade, which is our WAGL indicator. One of the things that you want to see with this indicator is that you'll think of this in two, two quadrants. We have the left two bar graphs and the right two bar graphs, and of course we have the one in the center, which is the approaching. With this, you want to see that the arrows are moving to the right. That allows us to know that students are moving either from one category to another and decreasing the number of students who are not performing, so the students who are far below are below level, and then increasing the number of students who are on level or above level. So everything moves to the right if it were in the, in the right framework, meaning you're previously far, now you're below, you're below, now you're approaching, and so on. So great work that's being done by our fourth-grade teachers as they increase the number of students who are on, approaching to above, as well as decreasing the number of students who are not, not performing. This is our fifth grade, it follows the same criteria in regards to the, the, the performance of our students. You see that the arrows continuously move to the right, you see some higher gains that you'll see in regards to the students who are on level, and you see some big dips as we see from below level where we've reduced that number. Next we'll move into sixth grade, and this is our iStation, which is the iSET, which is the iStation indicator of progress, and we'll see again the same criteria that's being developed and the trend that we're seeing that we saw from Mira and WAGL, where you'll see the arrows moving to the right. You'll see that our students are moving out of the at-risk area of tier three and going to the on-low level area of tier one. Seventh grade holds the same trend, which is exciting to see. So the work that our, our reading language arts teachers are doing in regards to the support from elementary all the way into middle school is showing great success. Eighth grade holds the same framework, which is, you know, I could just put myself and just hit audio and record myself because you're seeing the data showing itself out in regards to the arrows are moving down to the right and then up. This one is only three quadrant areas that we're looking at, but you're seeing that, that trend continues. Moving into the high school, we have MAP, which is our indicator that we use. The two numbers that you see above the bar graphs, it shows 221 and 223 with a line, those are the numbers that, that were established in regards to the data pre-pandemic, and that's the goal that we're working to get back to. As students are taking this assessment, the test gets harder as they get more answers correctly, and as they're not getting answers correctly, it gets easier. So it kind of scales you back and forth, and it's adapted to your skill set. So as you're performing against this exam, it's, it's developing what they call a RIT score. The RIT score is a measurement tool that MAP has in regards to their work. You're seeing that there was growth that we have, we went from 211 RIT score to a 214. The RIT score, this is the norm reference test, and so it allows us to do a comparison across all districts around the state, around the country as well. Unlike a paper and pencil test where students are asked the same questions and spend a fixed amount of time taking the test, math growth, math growth test is a computer adaptive test. That means every student gets a unique set of test questions based on their response, and it develops what is known as the RIT score. This allows us also to know the standards that the student needs to develop and work on in regards to performance on the next exam. Unfortunately, this doesn't do a STAR proficiency example because there's no writing component to this test, but it does let us see what are the standards that a student needs to begin to work on. Math is different. Map, math allows us to see proficiency in regards to where students may perform in regards to STAR. With this work, it's a shout-out to our K through eight and Algebra I teachers, which show right now, if students were to measure and take that assessment, we'd have 65-plus percent of our students who would hit that success level halfway through the school Another, excuse me, another look at MAP, math, is this bar chart. This allows you to see every section broken out, which I previously spoke to about Kendra through Algebra I. This allows you to see what growth looked like for students between the BOY and MOY data. Across the board, you see gains that were being made, some slight, some, some not, in regards to that work, the assessment they, they took on. 12th grade, you see no aggression, which is great to see that there's not a regression. What you'll see is that students are pulled out, so as an example below, in the asterisks on Algebra I, that does not include our eighth-grade GT students. Our eighth-grade GT students do not take the Algebra I assessment. The work that we're doing with our eighth-grade GT students who are in Algebra I is pushing them more towards higher-order thinking in regards to the work and the level of performance. So they're pursuing something greater than the Algebra I, is, is the work that's been shared with me from Ryan Castle, which is exciting. In the ninth grade, those are geometry students, that's why you see the, the jump so big in regards to the ninth grade. Those students are included in the ninth grade assessment and the tests that they're With that, I'll open up for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Riddick, appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the internal auditor role presentation. We'll hear from Brian Hawkinson. Welcome, Brian.
Good evening, I feel like the HBO mini-series, The Last of Us. We were talking about zombies earlier, so hopefully it won't put you into a zombie, a zombie state. Good evening, President Everett and Board, Dr. Rivera and Cabinet. I'm glad to be here, I'm Brian Hawkinson, I'm internal auditor with MISD. Sure, I'm pushing the right one here, there we go. Been here now this is my sixth year, and here is our department's office staff photo. Trying to keep it light here. As part of a, I think a well-organized school district, and now for the last 15 years, MISD has employed an internal auditor, and the state has, and we have adopted through DC Legal, that if we have an internal auditor that it reports directly to the Board. This leverages on independence, allowing the auditor to work in whatever area they're called to do, with having a direct administrative hardline oversight from someone within the staff. The internal audit function, which now I'm reporting to on this overview once a year, differentiates between our external auditor, which we work with our outside contract firm, Whitley Penn, whereas I myself am an employee of the district. The internal audit function conducts audit and consulting work, which is specialized to do the direction of an audit committee, we'll talk about in just a moment. I work also as requested by management, Dr. Rivera, or any of the director reports, or as anything that's brought to the attention of the auditor, either through anonymous sources or through my other investigations. The current organization of my function, I report through the Board, through an audit committee, and they're either volunteering or conscripted to be on that audit committee every year. Two members, Mr. Seward and Mr. Bingham, have served in that capacity for now the last three years. I report directly to them and am employed at their, their pleasure. I have a dotted line now through our Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations, Mr. Prado, prior to that, Mr. Poppy, Ms. Bowlin, and so on a day-to-day basis will run things through Mr. Prado for technique, for protocols, to make sure that he's aware of those sorts of things that I might have that are approaching the time, the best use of the time of the folks in our district. I've also listed here the superintendent and the assistant superintendent over personnel. All of these folks that are in this grid compromise our twice-annual audit committee meeting, and so we'd like to get feedback from the superintendent and assistant superintendent of personnel. Many connected pieces through my audits touch those areas. Just on a very high-level audit calendar, what it looks like from a beginning of the school year to the end. I do a, a board meeting works, working session, this gives me more opportunity in our, our working sessions to actually talk about the charter, potential changes, audit plans that are, are expected, allows the open dialogue with new board members as they come in to kind of educate them to the internal audit process. September and March are quarterly updates, these are basically just summaries of information and status of various audit actions being taken. And in December, in June, are our actual audit committee sit-down meetings. In June is, in particular, as we approach the end of a school year and the beginning of a new one, is when I propose a new audit plan. This needs to be approved annually by the audit committee, it's reviewed by all members, it plans out my time based on the priorities of the district and the, the will of the audit committee. I am, have an overall framework, structure of an audit charter, it's a very robust document, it's a best practice in internal audit. It provides a framework, but not only tactically, but also philosophically about what my work is supposed to be about. It wants to adhere to internal audit standards, which are part of an international code. It, it highlights do professional care in all manner. We have to understand with a single person in this role, all levels of transactions cannot be reviewed by a single person, so it, it gives the required statistical auditing of sampling, which is just a, a standard practice in internal audit to make sure that we're functioning as, as desired. Again, it reemphasizes independence, and this last year then in December, just in terms of the annual review we do with this document, we updated a piece of it to include whenever we're transitioning as a district into a new CFO role, that we do an exit review of the work that took place there, giving a clean slate and a, a kind of a picture of what else is going on for the incoming CFO. So that's something new that we're going to be doing. We need to determine each year what do we audit, so we use kind of a, a, a matrix here on the left. We take a look at several factors and then we score them out based on the materiality. If we have a, a large dollar figure, they would obviously have a higher value in that analysis. Compliance, if we have a heavily regulated area or a new area, a new program with many eyes looking on it, we think about ESER, we think about Medicaid's support through our special ed, many other programs fall into this. The risk of diversion, when we have bought or are buying new, lots of new assets, our new construction, lots of assets, that's a potential loss, so that gets scored higher. It's been, if it's been a while since some area has been audited last, we bring them back into rotation, give them a higher value. And then management and personnel, if we had some folks that have transitioned into a new role or coming out of another role, we will view that and then grade those out, and then with the audit committee determine how my time is going to be best used against those, those audited items. One thing that's not really shown there, but is in, on the right hand of this grid is, it is a, a best practice, and as a matter of fact, our, our neighbors directly to our west in Dallas employ seven people full-time to do campus audits. And that's a large part of where we have many moving parts, we have junior business people running the, you know, National Honor Societies and all the various clubs, there's lots of new folks that really haven't managed the money to that level. So the carve-out of my time this last year, a third of the campuses are reviewed each year, that's about 45% of my time, specific things coming from the other analyses of audit areas, 35%. Ad hoc requests from leadership, this ESER review included that. Training and program consultation, I kind of take it as a point of pride to be involved in helping establish training where we've seen some gaps in operations, especially at the campus level. Management of our fraud hotline, which I'll talk just very briefly about, operational risk management, I'll talk about that also, take some of my time, and then just working with the audit committee, meeting with them, and other administrative tasks, and if my math is right, that's 100%. The operational risk piece, about a year and a half ago, I approached the audit committee. Prior to coming to work for MISD, I was in a risk management role in the corporate world, and we can view every task that we do operationally. We have a risk management department which deals with insurance and risks and security, but really everything that we do, driving a bus, building a building, managing payroll, there are all risks involved in these operations. So I suggested that we take a look at all those operational areas that we do as a district and spend a little bit of time for the direct reports, the people that have oversight over those areas, to analyze where, what areas they feel that they are well-suited for, well-trained, well-funded, well-staffed, have adequate controls, adequate procedures, areas that they are challenged in, and areas that are on fire. And I was not going to be, be the judge of those things, but they, I was just going to give them the framework, and they were going to come back to me, and I was going to provide that to the audit committee. So that, you know, folks are either wired to that kind of analysis or not, so I would just shepherd them along, I guess that's a good word, or partner with them along, try to, try to help them understand the process. And here on the right are the seven areas that we would look at in terms of their operations, compliance to laws, environmental, not many, really how they fit them, their operation within the industry, financial, information for decision-making, process risk, A to Z, how do you complete your work, where are the gaps, where are the drop-offs, where are the, the off-ramps? Strategic, how well their per-process aligns with the Strategic, how well their per-process aligns with the strategic operations of the district, or if it's a one-off program, it may not have a lot of connectivity. And then certainly, technology, systems, and security. So across all of those different parameters, these are the most current feedback. And some of these have been spoken to in a number of the meetings that you've had well before this and going forward. This is non-teacher staffing, but there are challenges for the level of oversight and program. We may have one or two directors over an area that's got a lot of next-level folks. And if they're out of pocket, then it's tough to keep that oversight. Small oversight staff can create a knowledge gap. If we have someone that's been in a position for a long period of time, and they retire, they move on to something else. If they haven't well-documented something, there's a big knowledge drop-off and a long transition. So a number of areas identified, I'm the lone wolf on a particular position. That's not a good business practice. Some areas lack current or sufficiently detailed working procedures. What does an auditor do? We look at the procedure first. Are you managing to the procedure? Some didn't have that. Variability in campus processes, there's a lot of autonomy within our principals in different areas. And sometimes if I'm testing them, or they're looking at how things, you know, they're trying to support campuses, some of these operational departments, it's tough sometimes for them to measure them equally with different processes. Measurability of effectiveness and controls. We throw time, we throw money, we throw processes at things. Do we get the results that we want? So they struggle sometimes to see how effective their work is. Societal dynamics, working with parents, working with students, working in the society. It's tough to sometimes get, for example, PTA. Tough to keep people aligned and get leadership in that. So that was a bit of a challenge in some of those areas. And then tasks that are mandated without funding, or they're vague directions. So those were some of the high-level analyses coming out of operational risks. Very quickly, we do manage a fraud hotline. It was established about four years ago. We use a vendor named Lighthouse, managed by a firm named Centrio. We deploy this in multiple ways. We have a webpage, we have ability to call, we have collateral information hanging in campuses and in our operational departments. And we also have a video that circulates and gets trained to. We know that statistically, 40 to 45% of any fraud that's found is by someone who's on the ground, sees it, and brings in a tip. It's not from an internal auditor, it's not from external auditors, it's not from the managers, but it's someone that sees it happening and puts it in. I just thought, for your purposes, I'd show you what other large districts in Texas are doing in terms of hotlines. We are in this first-line bracket with Houston, Dallas, Fort Bend. We have a 24/7 phone coverage online application that can go into. It shows the vendors under comments there, several of them similar to ours. Some of the larger districts don't just use their hotline just for the types of financial things we do. They open it up to everything, bullying, security, everything. Dallas, for example, reports about 1,800 calls or reports into their hotline each year. We get about five or six, based on where we are. Then as you go down through the other grids in this, they're less sophisticated. Aldine Garland, they use an online system, but they don't have a 24/7 call line. Some have created their own, and then some don't have a formal process that I could find. So for the cost that we are expending, which is about $2,400 a year, I think it's money very well spent for giving us some assurance on that. This is my last slide, just talks about some additional things that I do. Created, I have to create a video every year. It's just in my DNA. So we created one for fixed asset inventory. It's a training video. We shifted the inventory from the campuses away from April and May to November. That was, I think, you know, going to the dentist, right? It's tough. You're going to do the inventory one time or the other. We just found that it was better for the campuses to do it in that timeframe. So we built a video that was attached to that. I do new principal audits if someone's been assigned. So Ms. Tracy at Frazier, I'll be over with her. And I conduct those usually during the summer. Basically, I show them their previous audit and talk to them about the challenges that they have. I partner with requesting campuses and library services to provide financial operations training. I just come in at the beginning of the year, much like staff development, and talk, you know, with club sponsors. We launched something pretty remarkable, at least in my mind, in my world. We launched a campus secretary support office. We know we are an education institution, and we train our kids, we train our teachers. We don't really train our secretaries, not as well as we should. So several years ago, we created a mentor program, we built in training. And then this last year, we launched actually a full-time position, and hopefully will be two by the end of this year, that actually fill in where there are gaps and also are those super-users that help. And then our operational risk reviews and risk grid discussions, like I mentioned earlier, we're about, not quite halfway evaluating all of those. I will now open up to questions or comments or get him out of here. I'm about to fall asleep.
I will tell you, Mr. Hokinson, I found it very comprehensive and very thorough. It's a great report. I mean, you touched parts of safety, compliance, risks, financials, technology. You're looking at everything in depth, I guess, what the Board had in mind when we talked about an independent auditor. So I find it fascinating and very good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
He's become a very good asset for the district, particularly in this training area. And he's done special projects for Dr. Rivera this year as well. We've loaned him out and done an incredible job. And an auditor with a sense of humor is a rare thing, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Board, if you have no objections, I'm going to move up the construction portion of the meeting. We've got Don and Jay and Graham back there that are just about ready to go to sleep.
Is it getting late for them? Is it getting too late for them? They have to go home.
So this is an action item. This is an action item to approve the GMP and total construction costs for Mesquite High School welding lab renovation.
Thank you, Board President, School Board, Dr. Rivera. Tonight, we're here to get approved the GMP for the welding lab at Mesquite High School. With us tonight is, with WRA Architects is Graham Bowman and Roland Gentry. With Lee Lewis Construction's Devin Sherman and Taylor Leach. And with Mesquite ISD is Jay Russell. And with this team, we recommend the approval of the Mesquite High School Unit V Welding Lab renovation, GMP in the total amount of $3,582,813, as submitted by Lee Lewis Construction, Inc., the construction manager agent. The total project cost will be $4,61,282.33 for the Mesquite High School Unit V Welding Lab renovation. We recommend the approval of this by the School Board for the GMP for the welding lab.
Move second. Have a motion by Mr. Rose and a second by Mr. Seward to approve the GMP and the total construction cost for the Mesquite High School Unit V Welding Lab renovation. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item, sir?
Can we take welding class?
Can we what?
I want that welding class.
Oh.
No, I say yes.
You can weld? Okay.
Next item is an action item to approve the construction manager-at-risk method for the Mesquite Clinic renovation as the construction method. Don?
Yes, the administration recommends the approval of, myself in construction services for Mesquite ISD, recommendation of construction manager-at-risk as the construction method for the Mesquite ISD clinic renovation.
I have a motion by Mrs. Whitlock and a second by Ms. Collier to approve the construction manager-at-risk method for the Mesquite Clinic renovation as a construction method. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Poole. I apologize, guys, for the lateness of the hour, but...
Mr. Everett, you want any properties, property exchanges, he's already up there?
Sure. We'll move up property also, Don.
Okay. The administration recommends the approval of Mesquite ISD for approving the memorandum of understanding for the land swap with the city of Mesquite. With the expansion of Faith &amp; P. Lucas comes, they need some right-of-way. It's going to be at the south side of where Vanguard is, and we're trading it for some northside property. There's a little City of Mesquite slither in there that we're gradually, you know, eating at, so.
Have a motion by Mr. Bing and a second by Mr. Carbo to approve the MOU for a property exchange between the city of Mesquite and Mesquite ISD to Vanguard High School for the right-of-way acquisition for the reconstruction of Lucas Boulevard. We were reminded of this last week by our city manager, Cliff Cahaly. So he's probably home watching. All in favor, is there any additional discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Don. We'll go back to administration for an action item to approve the 2023-24 professional learning waiver. Dr. Rivera? Dr. Hensley?
Thank you. Hello again. The professional learning minutes waiver allows the district to train staff on various educational strategies designed to improve student performance in lieu of student instruction, not to exceed 2,100 total waiver minutes, and must reflect actual staff development minutes provided. Districts are required to submit a waiver to TEA, with the waiver expiring at the end of the 2023-24 school year. We're requesting that the Board approve the professional learning minutes waiver for the 2023-24 school year.
Have a motion by Ms. Collier and a second by Mr. Rose to approve the 2023-24 professional learning waiver as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Next item is an action item. Matters pertaining to the regular school trustee election scheduled for May 6, 2023. Adopt the resolution certifying the unopposed school trustee candidates and consider adopting an order of cancellation of the regular May 6, 2023 school trustee election as provided by law when all positions are uncontested.
I'm all for that.
Mr. President?
I'm all for that. I approve that with great joy.
Given that we have three contestants, three candidates unopposed.
We have a motion by Mr. Carbo and a second by Ms. Whitlock. Dr. Rivera, do you have any thing to add?
I don't have an opinion on the matter, sir.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is an action item to approve the new Ben and Joanne Cross Elementary School attendance zone in changes to Mackie Thompson Gray, Oxziger, Henry Terry, and Woolley attendance zones. Mr. Morris?
Good evening again. Last month, we declared our intent for the rezoning of that area around Cross. Upon notifying the impacted families, we received about 20 phone calls to our office. Most of them asking clarifying questions. They wanted to ensure that siblings were still going to be able to attend the same school and not be separated, and they wanted, some of them wanted, just needed help accessing the form to declare that intent to stay. Ultimately, we had about 119 families that elected to remain at their current campus instead of going to their newly-zoned school. That being said, we recommend your approval of the new Ben and Joanne Cross Elementary Attendance Zones.
We have a motion by Ms. Whitlock and a second by Ms. Collier to approve the new Ben and Joanne Cross Elementary School Attendance Zone in changes as discussed. Is there any further comments?
Just want to thank you for your work on that. It seems like we do that pretty well. We don't get a lot of, y'all are very accommodating when there's, you know, families that are concerned about it. So thank you for that.
Appreciate that.
That's about as smooth as it can be, so.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item, Mr. Morris, the discussion of the district-wide intruder detection audit report findings.
This is my monthly conversation with you all about the intruder audits. We have had 29 of our 49 traditional campuses have been audited so far this year. There's no findings to report to you this month or to report to the School Safety Committee.
Thank you very much, Taylor. The next item is under business. It's an action item to approve the engagement letter for the external financial audit for the fiscal year 2324. Welcome, Mr. Prado.
Good morning, I mean, good afternoon, good evening. Oh, sorry. President Everett, Board of Trustees, Dr. Rivera, you have in front of you consideration to continue our engagement letter with external financial advisor, Whitley Penn, for our financial statements, for your consideration. I will answer any questions you might have.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Bingham and a second by Mr. Seward to approve the engagement letter for the external financial audit for fiscal year 2324 to Whitley Penn LLP. Is there any discussion? They did. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Board, it's 10:05 PM. Mr. Thomas, are we okay? Everything cool? Okay. All right. With no other items on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned. Thank everyone for your time.